Well, good evening and welcome to the May 20th, 2013 Goffstown Board of Selectment Meeting. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some minutes that we need to take up tonight on the May 13th, 2013, both public and non-public minutes. There a motion on the minutes?
Motion to accept, 5/13/13, public with corrections, Mr. Chair.
Okay. One second. What do you have for corrections?
My first one comes on page six. Fire on Elm Street. It's not 7:00 a.m., it was 1:00 a.m., Catherine.
Okay.
That's all. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, it was what, 1:00 a.m.?
1:00 a.m., yes.
Thank you. Any others?
Page seven, the All Boards Meeting. So the absent list was, Mike Lawler was listed as absent, but he was not invited to the meeting. Tess Martin showed up in his place anyway. So I guess that's just one correction there, correct?
Right, so we need to delete it, right?
Right.
Delete that. Okay. Any other corrections?
Page five, under Budget Development. Where it says Derek asked, I think it meant, "Do you mean the budget explanations?" And it should read, "Derek asked, 'Do you mean the budget presentations?'" I had asked if we could get those a week or two in advance.
So not explanations, presentations?
Presentations.
Yeah.
And add "do" after "asked."
Yes.
Any others?
That was it.
Anybody else?
So what vote you're getting changed on now?
Derek asked, "Do you mean..."
Explanations to presentations.
Gotcha. Close and fair of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries by 00. And how about the, well, the, non-public?
For the non-public, May 13.
Yes.
Any changes?
No changes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by 00. Thank you. I have one announcement here. The announcement is in reference to public informational meetings for the CMAC, that stands for Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Grant on Mass Road Village Intersection and Pleasant Street Reclamation Project, conducted by the Department of Public Works on Tuesday, May 21st, 2013, that is tomorrow evening, at the Goffstown Town Hall, 16 Main Street in Goffstown, in room 106, where we are right now. The Mass Road intersections, the listening session will begin at 6:30 p.m., and that will be followed by the Pleasant Street Project Information Meeting at 8:00 p.m. So we would hope those people watching on GTV-16 are interested in those two projects would show up tomorrow night and provide us with their comment, or listen to some informational details as well. Are there any other announcements that other members of the board might have tonight? This side? Nothing? Thank you. Chief Sullivan, you ready to rock and roll?
I am.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Well, we're still kind of early on that.
Well, you caught me a little early.
Yeah. Well, we're a little early for that, weren't we? You want to come up? Wait until 6:30, take the public comment.
I've sent the bill to Sanders.
Oh, hi Senator. How are you this evening?
You may be here for public comment.
Are you here for public comment, or supporting the chief?
Well, I'm always supporting the chief.
Of course.
By the way, I could give you a couple of comments, actually, I'm here for the event at 7:00.
Okay. Sure, come on forward, appreciate it.
Good.
Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, always nice to be here and, you know, visit with my friends from Goffstown. And Sue, always nice to see you, and a couple of men around, the great job she does. She informs me when I make mistakes, and I appreciate that very much.
You don't give any phone calls.
Thank you, Sue. Just, you know, quickly, the Senate is now working on the operating budget for the state of New Hampshire. We're in, finally, it's, you know, as we speak, we started last week, will continue, we continue today, will continue tomorrow, will continue on Wednesday. We'll have a session on Thursday, we'll reconvene on Friday, and again on Monday and Tuesday, to try to put the budget together. The budget that came over from the House is a bit out of balance. When you look at it, if you look at it carefully, there's a, basically, $100 million problem. You double that because of the federal matching aid that takes place in Health and Human Services. The real problem is the Met tax. The Met tax is yet to be resolved. You've got managed care, the Met tax, and Medicaid expansion, three very significant components that have to get together. You've got to create some synergy there in order to make this budget work. In the area of mental health, the governor has put forth some significant changes that will help us in the area of mental health. The designated, more designated receiving beds, which I think are imperative. Most Goffstown residents will probably use CMC or Elliott, possibly Concord Hospital, and we know what's happened in those emergency rooms with kids, with human beings with mental problems. You must have read some of the stories in the Concord Monitor that have been published that clearly indicate we have a problem. You know, we've got a significant problem, and we have to, we have to deal with that. Making some renovations at New Hampshire Hospital as we speak, creating a new 12-bed area, which will help as a designated receiving facility, but we've got to do more along those lines. We, in the area of, in the area of education, you know, we're again working with the adequacy formula, maybe a couple of slight changes there, particularly in the area of charter schools. There is a proposal to create four more charter schools. That's a bit of a bone of contention as we speak, but you know that the charter schools get 54/50, where the normal adequacy grade is 34/50, so there's a differential there. And four more schools could mean another $3 million added to the adequacy plan, and we have to work out where that's going to come from. Huge, huge deal is the gas tax, and I got a presentation from your Director of Public Works about the gas tax and the impact it would have on infrastructure. Gas tax will come up for a vote in the Senate on Thursday. It is in the budget, it's in House Bill 2, the 12-cent increase in the gas tax over a period of three years, and for the truckers using diesel, it's over a longer period of time. A lot, a lot of discussion about the infrastructure and the impact that this revenue would have on the infrastructure, because all of that revenue comes back to the locals. You get 3 cents now on the gas tax, which really isn't enough to make a significant mark as far as the local infrastructure is concerned. Sue always asks me about the business taxes and the formula where monies would come back to the communities. That's suspended in the governor's, the governor's budget, that suspension has continued in the House budget. That's $25 million a year in revenue sharing. That hasn't happened for the last four years, and, you know, once you suspend something in the operating budget, it has a very difficult, difficult time coming back. And that suspension is quite significant, because it does have, does have an impact on the communities. And remember when we went from the inventory tax to the business profits tax, that arrangement was made, and that hasn't been fulfilled for the last few years. That's basically problematic. And, you know, I came here, when we talked about the last budget, and I said to you that there were a number of things that were pushed down to the locals, and I voted against the budget because of that, of that reason, and had a methodology to try to do something a little bit better for the locals, it didn't, didn't work. But this budget is a better budget. It's a better budget than the last biennium. It truly is. The question is, are we going to have a committee of conference with the, with the House and the Senate, and is a budget going to get passed that meets the needs of New Hampshire citizens? That's, that's a challenge, you know, that we face. It's a significant challenge, and as I said, there's a differential of 100 million, maybe 200 million, and most of it's in the area of Health and Human Services. That's where the problems are. It's the nursing home situation. I don't know, Sue, if you got it, but I received calls coming out of the woodwork last week about a change that had been made in the, in the dollars going back to the nursing homes. And then no change had been made, so I don't know what generated that, you know, but did receive calls, checked it with Health and Human Services, and they didn't reduce, they didn't reduce it. So something was generated there. That's always, that's always a concern. My concern has always been congregant housing, and do we keep people in residences so that they don't have to go to nursing homes? Once you move a person from their own environment, and maybe HICPIC, they go to a nursing home, that's a $50,000 a year expense. And in most instances, once you go to a nursing home, you don't come back. So we eliminated in the budget last time congregant housing, I'm trying to get that restored. For $800,000 done away with, we spent over $4 million. It doesn't make, that doesn't make sense. I mean, even though you've got the 50/50 matched, the $2 million is matched by $4, it doesn't make sense. We're going to work on, work on that. But as far as the rooms and meals money's going to come back, and there'll be an increase in the second year of the biennium, there will be an increase that, it won't be the increase that, that you would like, but there will be an increase. Rooms and meals is performing very well. Now, as you know, in the last budget, they took a portion of rooms and meals and dedicated it to building aid. Well, when you do the amortization, that deal doesn't end until 2030, because it's a $180 million payoff. So the law says that you will take what it takes from rooms and meals to pay off the building aid. We pay our bonds significantly heavy upfront. We do a 65% upfront payoff, so that's why the tail end gets, gets down to a very, very, a nice situation. But that's $14 million a year that comes off of rooms and meals to pay for building aid. So that's something we have to, we have to deal with, we have to, you know, that's done, and we have to deal with it as we go forward. And we have to reinstitute building aid somehow. That's, that's another significant problem. On the bright side, revenues are better. They're better than, than we had anticipated. The business taxes are better. The problem we have is in the communications tax, which has taken a dive because of the fact that they repealed the section of the tax that covered Internet. Internet was taxed under a unique New Hampshire situation. We thought we were grandfathered, well, that case doesn't exist. So communication taxes are light. They'll be light by about $11 million for this year, and we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that in the next budget as we, as we go forward. That's, that's a quick overview, but if you have specific, you know, specific questions that I can, I can address, I'll be more than happy to. I'll end by saying, I want to bring the Commissioner of Health and Human Services and the Commissioner of Insurance, and I want to do a public seminar with them over two things. Medicaid expansion and managed care. Because the people have to understand what this means. You know, we've got to go from a fee-for-service mantra to a capitation model. It's got to happen, otherwise, there's just not enough money to pay for. But I think people have to understand what that means. You know, what does managed care mean? What does expanded Medicaid mean? And the two people who would be most helpful would be the Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Nick Tupus, and Roger Savini, who's the Commissioner of Insurance. And, you know, we're talking about Medicaid expansion now. And over a 10-year period, I just did the numbers today with, with Health and Human Services, over a 10-year period, the state will take in $2.5 billion. Now, it'll cost us $27 million, but we will receive $2.5 billion under the Medicaid expansion, under the ACA. For the first three years, it's 100% funded by the federal government. Then it drops off 95, and then it drops off to 93, and then it's 90 for the rest of its life. So that's, that's how we're going to deal with health care. And you know, a part of health care that's very dangerous is uncompensated care. When someone goes to that facility and they can't pay, somebody's got to pay for it. And right now, we've been paying for it out of the, you know, out of the Met tax, and that money has been brought back to the entities and paying for the uncompensated care. But the most expensive use of a medical facility is the emergency room. Now, our emergency rooms are loaded. I don't know if, if you've taken a chance, and Nick, you probably have, go by the Catholic Medical Center Emergency Room. I mean, they've got gunshot wounds, they've got stabbings, they've got children in there, they're using it as a primary care physician. The mothers and fathers are bringing babies in there to be treated, and that's the most expensive way to treat them, and they don't get, they really don't get the kind of service that they need. But that's been, that's been out of sight, and we've got to, we've got to do away with that. You know, we've got to handle that in a much, a much different manner, and that's a big challenge that we face. So if you have questions, I want to, I want to address them. And as I said, we're going through the budget now, and hopefully, we'll come up with a good product that will make sense.
I just have one.
Sure.
Thank you. Are you familiar at all with the budget that has been put together by the House? The reason why I'm asking that is, we were told last week that it's the first one where we've ended up, I'm just reading from the minutes, it's the first one where we ended up with a real surplus.
Man, it's baloney. There's no real surplus in the, in the House budget. That's my opinion. I've read the House budget, and I'm not as good at doing clocks as you are, Brother DeVance, and I saw your picture on the front page of the paper, but, but I work that budget every day. And I can tell you, there's no real surplus in that budget. They have $23 million for managed care, taken for managed care. We haven't even instituted managed care, but in the first year of the biennium, they're counting $33 million in savings. They took the tobacco settlement money that we took, the, the Senate has taken for 13, and they've got it into 14. They took $21.6 million. You take that 23 and that 21, that's $46 million that isn't there. That, that's, that creates an imbalance. I mean, that does not take a great accountant to figure out. If, if you've got those two numbers, and you've got them over here, and they've got them over here, there's a negative someplace. And that's, that's the way it is. Look, everybody works hard on the budget, but I, but I do, I do say to you that we get the last crack at the budget. The budget that's come over from the House in the last couple of bienniums hasn't really, has not been balanced. We do have a structural deficit that we've got to address. The state of New Hampshire has got to, to address as we, as we move forward. We, we solve our problems sometimes with one-time situations, and I, I understand that. I've been doing, I've been doing this budget for almost 40 years now. And I'll tell you that we depend on our lapses, our lapses in the 42, 43 million range. One year, we lapsed $97 million. And the people must understand that a lapse is, a lapse is created when you appropriate, but you don't spend. So it lapses. That's not, I mean, that's just not the way to do it. That budget that came from the House does not have a surplus. Now, they might say on paper, they have created a surplus, but I can tell you, those two items make it quite clear that there is not a surplus.
So given that scenario, there's bound to be some further downshifting. Any feel for where it might happen? I understand you won't know until...
Well, I, I, I hope, you know, I hope that, that some things happen that allow, that allow for a better situation to exist between the state and the municipalities. The revenue sharing isn't going to take place. It's not in anybody's budget. And I think you've accounted for that in your budget. You've recognized the fact that your portion of that 25 million is, is not coming. Now, now the question is, what about, what about the gas tax? You know, what's going to happen with the gas tax? And if you get a positive situation with regard to the gas tax, how much of that gets back to the community for infrastructure? That's, that's the bridges and the roads. That's a considerable amount of money over a period of time. You're going to have DOT here at 7:00, and I think they can give you an indication of what happens if you get the gas tax passed. That, I'm not sure that's going to happen, but, and I would hope that the downshifting would be mitigated to some extent by the more dollars that have been appropriated for the, the mental health, the developmental disabilities waitlist, if we can take care of that. The schools, the school situation is pretty much okay as we speak. It's local problems that are being created with the schools, both in Manchester and in Goffstown, that we're going to have to deal with. "We," meaning the locals, that, that's a problem. We're not, the state's not going to have a lot, a lot to do with. But I think the downshifting will stop to some extent. But the key, the key elements that you will face, and that we will face in Manchester, that's the 20th Senate District, two items that in my opinion will never get restored. And, and I think revenue sharing, Sue, is problematic as we speak, and the retirement system is problematic. Those are two problems that have been eliminated from the state budget. They do create downshifting, and I don't, I don't see a reversal taking place in either one of those items for a long period of time. And they're significant. Remember, this, the state of New Hampshire at one time went from a 40% contribution to retirement to a 0%. And that took place over an extended period of time, but those, those are elements that they're in place, and we have to, we have to deal with them. Now, in Manchester, where we have our own retirement system, you know, Manchester and Nashua created in the 70s their own retirement system for their city, their municipal employees. The teachers and the fire and police remain in the, in the state system, but that's, that's one compensating factor that Manchester has. But the rest of the towns, I mean, almost everybody went into the system. One way or the other, they joined the, they joined the system. So those are two problems that I think we have, we have, we have to deal with. We as a community have to deal with. Yet, on the, on the bright side, if we pass a couple of other things, we can do some other things to help the communities. And we, you know, we're all in this together, and so we got to, we have, we have to work together to make it happen.
Yeah, just one question. Do you see any possible, possibility of a change in a formula for rooms and meals tax?
John King proposed a change, and that's been suspended. If you take the suspension off, that formula will continue, and then you'll get up to the 40%. That may happen in the next biennium, but as I said, once, once you committed to taking a percentage of that rooms and meals to pay for building aid, you know, that's, that's a 20-year situation. And in the beginning, it, it lumps off $14 million a year that could, could be, or should have been redistributed, but it's being, it's paying for building aid. So it's a very strong, it's a very strong revenue base. It's been, it's been the most predictable source of revenue that I have seen since I've been in the state government, has a nice flow to it. And if you, if you used it specifically for what it was meant, you know, the reimbursement, it would, it would have shown fairly significant growth.
So in year two of the biennium, you said we would see an increase in rooms and meals? Is that because the formula's going to be applied to the full rooms and meals?
Not, not the full, but I think you'd get another $5 million that's in the budget. So there's some, there's some increase, but, but not the full, because you've got that thing hanging over you. You take $14 million off of that every year.
I meant the, you know, when the rooms and meals were creased?
Yes, yes.
That wasn't just for building aid?
No, 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 no. Actually, building aid wasn't even, it wasn't even included in that. That was, that was an increase of, you know, from eight to nine, and it was, it was afterwards that building aid came in. So you saw, what you saw is a, a great, a great push-up in terms of the money coming back, which was mitigated by the...
The towns didn't get any of that increase?
Right, no, they didn't get it.
And we're not getting any part of that increase?
You'll get a little more in the second year of the biennium, but not much.
Other questions?
Just a follow-up on it, though.
Sure, please.
But on, as far as the formula between the, between the towns, because every once in a while, and we had it again with the Lake Region's town, because they claim that they generate the majority of that revenue, so that majority should go to them.
Yeah, that formula's not going to change. There was an attempt to, to change the formula, that, that, people said no to that. The formula remains as it, as it is. Yeah, the formula remains as it is. And, and I think that, you know, at this point, it's going to stay that way. It's not going to change. There have been attempts to, but I apologize for not getting the point, but the formula isn't going to change.
Well, the other concern too is if you start taking that money towards the building aid...
Right.
And then the other towns come in, and they, if they make a successful argument that they should get more, then they're going to get more of the building aid too.
You've got to, and it's, yes, that's exactly what would happen. If you ever changed that, if you ever changed the formula the way some people wanted to change the formula from the point of generation, I mean, again, that, that entity was put together so that everybody would share. That's, that's the really the way it has to be. I think we need more, we need more unity in terms of our, of our state, our counties, our municipalities, and so forth. We need to get together, and we're all in this together. This has been a very, very, very difficult economic period. Very difficult economic period, and we're moving out of it. The growth is, is not what we want. The growth is very slow, and it's steady, but it's very, it's very, very slow. We're seeing, we're receiving, we're seeing improvement in the southern counties, in Merrimack, Hillsborough, and Rockingham County. You've got 50% of the real estate transactions are taking place in those three counties. We have a, we've got a situation up in the North Country where, I mean, it's, it's the ultimate disaster, and we've got to, I think we as a state have to deal with it. We've got to help those, help, help people that live in the North Country. They, they have to survive just as we do, but it's, you know, it's an economic recovery that's very, very slow. We had to delay the economists come in and talk to us, and he, he said, you know, you're looking at 2%, 2.5% growth. I mean, when you, when you do 2.5 on 2, the multiplier really puts you more like 3 in the second year, because it's compounded, but that's, that's not a very dramatic rate of growth. And we've got to create some jobs. We've got to create jobs. Got to keep people in, in our area. We have a, an exodus of youth from our communities, and that, that creates a series of problems. So, you know, we have a lot of things to deal with, but I, I believe that we're capable of doing that, as long as we face things in a, in a very unified fashion, and recognize that we have to be together in order to solve these problems. But that's it. Anything else, I'd be more than happy to, to talk about.
Well, thank you for stopping in, Senator Dazan. We certainly appreciate your support and your support of Goffstown.
Thanks, and anytime that you need anything, Sue knows how to reach me for sure, but my office is on the first floor of the State House, and happy to have you come up and visit any, any time, and any time I can be of service. I want to, I want to be in. This budget is a big, the budget's a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
You know, and there are 130 sections the House built to. Each one of those carries the weight of law, so you know that there's a lot of activity going on there, and things that affect... So, you know that there's a lot of activity going on there, and things that affect the communities are, are very important to us, so.
Thank you. Feel free to stop in anytime.
Oh, thanks, thanks, thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Evening, Chief.
Good evening.
You have a bid award recommendation for us?
Yes. Back on the 29th, I forwarded bid specifications before the board, and it was approved. On the 3rd, it was published in the Union Leader, and also on the town website and the police department website. The bids were to be in today by 2:00, sealed. They were opened by myself and Derek Horn, and we received bids from three different Of that, of those companies, Northeast Custom Creations' bid was 99,463. There were four separate options included, 900, 600, 325, and 245. The first two were for lights, the light package, the LEDs. The 325 was for a siren, and the 295 were for speaker upgrades. Those were just options totaling 2120. The second company that submitted a bid was Cerchi for 99,969. All of the bids, by the way, did meet the specifications. A secondary quote from Cerchi was for 76,463, but excluded the mast and camera system that was included with their first bid and the bid by custom. And the final bid was from International Surveillance Technologies from Deerfield Beach, Florida, and those bids raised, ranged from 142,005 to 149,500. It's my recommendation before the board to go with Northeast Custom Creations. We've dealt with them in the past. They created our recent, our command post is now 20-something years old. They've recently built Bedford's Command Post, Hudson's Police Command Post, and have done numerous work, both for the state and local governments around the town. We've been in conversations with him all along. He's guided us through this whole process as far as what we need, what we can afford, et cetera, and my recommendation would be go to the bid with Custom Creations.
And their base bid was?
99,463.
And then, and that includes the 2120 for the options?
No, that does not.
That's, that's in addition to that?
And if I could speak to the LED lights, I know there was some concern. The LED lights, the concerns we're looking to mount are the square box lights that go on the side of the vehicle. They're not emergency revolving lights or flashing lights or anything like that. They're just the simple mounts on the side of the box. Is that what we're looking to replace?
So, just to, like, illuminate the scene somewhere?
No, it'd be the blue warning lights-
Oh, okay, okay.
But they're just the square permanent mounted. They're not, I mean, they flash, but it's not a strobe or anything of that sort.
They're not used that often, are they?
And no, the, and this is not going to be an emergency response vehicle. This is going to be more for warning vehicles that come up upon it at a scene, once it's already there. It's not going to respond, and as an emergency response vehicle, it would be only at, at a scene, a crime scene or a command post.
Yes. So, which of the option, are you taking any of those options, then?
I would prefer not to. I have spoken to Dennis prior to the bids coming in about perhaps removing the light bar itself and putting the visor lights on, like the unmarked cars. Number one, it's going to cut down on the cost of even transferring the light bar, and that may be a reduction even further than what we have, so. So, Matt, you had some thoughts about the lights?
Yeah, I'd have to, I just, I'd have to look at the bid, Chief. I mean, I don't, I'm not going to debate it here and now. I mean, if you're, if you're comfortable with it, so be it. We're going to, we're going to go with-
I would like to get the LED lights. They drain us on the battery, et cetera. I understand all of that. For $2,000 more, and I'm already $4,000 over what CIP is, yeah, that's $6,000. I could find it, but it's still, it's a, it's a leap from where I'm at, and that, that's a concern.
Okay, there's no questions, I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the chief and award the bid to, who was it?
Northeast-
Northeast Custom Creations.
Second.
In the amount of 99,463, is that correct?
Correct.
I'll second.
Second. Selectman Campusano, is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries 500.
Am I able to go forward, and the concern is here with this? Prices go up 3% on vehicles June 1st, so I'd like to be able to sign off with Dennis and go forward.
Yeah, that's it. That's all I think. If there was a vote from the board-
Just wanted to make sure right up front, so.
Okay, thank you. And then, we had a second item?
Second item, it's going to be a sole source for IMC, also known as Tri-Tech. Tri-Tech now owns IMC. Back about three, maybe four years ago, we started with this process for the dispatch software, record software. And IMC has been the dispatch programming software that we've looked at from the beginning. It's going to allow us to integrate with other agencies. Currently, they serve 130 police agencies in New Hampshire alone. Therefore, we can integrate with them. There are also the driving force behind e-ticketing, which is the up-and-coming for our enforcement, pay-per-reduction for summonses, et cetera, through our software. Finally, they also have a module which is included in this bid that they have proposed to link us in our scheduling with Unitis Software. So, they can take from our schedule and include it right into the software, which will again reduce input by secretaries, et cetera, the software or the input of the payroll. My budgeted amount, part of this special article, was 169,425. The cost of the software, including, I'm sorry, including the data conversion, is 142,840. In addition to that, there's $16,125 needed for hardware, which IT can purchase, which we have left over $10,460 with a savings. They have continued to go down in their cost. Also, in the long run, we currently use CrimeView Software, which allows us to dispatch and place persons in high-crime areas, accidents, burglars, et cetera. This software comes with that, so we can eliminate that cost of 29, 25 yearly. And additionally, we have a Xanager scheduling software, which we pay just under $700 a year, and that also is included, not Xanager, but a similar program in IMC, so we could do away with those two yearly costs as well.
And this has all been budgeted?
So, that's all, it's been a special-
Any questions for the chief on the software?
I'll make a motion that we accept the chief's recommendation on the IMC software.
Motion from Selectman Devanza, second. Selectman O'Me. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500.
Just a quick question?
Yes.
Chief, how will that, and this may be to Sue as well, with the implementation of the finance software, will there be, how, will this, you know, the scheduling with Neil, and how is this going to work?
We will work as closely as we can together. Most of the IMC Tri-Tech people will be in to do that. There will be a portion, and we will require Neil and Brian, and we will work around that the best we possibly can.
Either one of those on, one of those are huge.
Unis is aware.
Unis is aware. We've, I've indicated Unis that we've got this as well, and so, and actually, IMC is also aware of what we're doing.
Are they pledging support to, to help? Is there some support available through either one or both to, to try and coordinate these and make sure that-
They've done this in the past with other agencies, so it's not the first time they've both worked together with this, so.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, we skipped over the public comment session. I don't see anybody from the public here, so I assume there is no public comment at this time. Presentation's at 7:00, correct? Well, we've got time again then to go into the town administrator's report, so.
Okay. Your two-week meeting schedule is enclosed in your packets. EDC workshop is tomorrow at 3:00.
Have that covered?
I'm going to try and beat you.
Tomorrow evening is the CMAC that was announced earlier in the meeting. Does the board want to have a representative on the charter call for Selectman Rep?
At the last meeting, I think, Selectman-
It says TBD, to be determined.
Adams, didn't you already say that?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's Selectman Adams, thank you.
Although I'm going to be, I may be late for the 6:31.
Okay.
Selectman LeMay has offered to start the meeting.
Okay, very good. Wednesday is HDC at Grassmere Town Hall. Thursday, Planning Board is meeting, and next Monday, there's no meeting, it's Memorial Day. And the following Thursday is CIP.
I got that one.
You got that one? Okay. So, everyone can make their-
I'm in.
All right.
Very good.
Appointments, the CMAC Ad-Hoc Committee. You have volunteer applications from Ruth Gage as the HDC rep, Larry Brown and Don Ball as community reps, and we also received one today with Cynthia Bowfer. I assume that would be Main Street rep, since she's on the design team for Main Street?
Yeah, I assume so.
How many, how many-
Are there enough spots?
So, there's one more spot for a community rep, if anyone wants to come forward.
So, there's still one vacant spot that needs to be filled. It's a at-large?
Yes.
Community at-large. Anybody out there in Gkeyville, Andy, who wants to serve as a member at large? Come on down to Town Hall, fill out a volunteer application.
I bet you, do it online.
Do it online.
So, we need a motion to make those appointments?
Motion to accept the volunteer applications from Ruth Gage for HDC, Larry Brown from the Main Street Program, and Don Ball as-
No.
No, I'm sorry. Larry Brown and Don Ball as a community at-large member. Thank you.
Cynthia as Main Street-
Cynthia Bowfer as a Main Street representative.
I'll second that. Have a motion by Selectman Campusano, seconded by Selectman Devanza. Is there any discussion? Motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. Would you like a musical accompaniment?
And the Cable Television Community Access Committee recommends the appointment of David Joseph Clark as a regular member. He's currently an alternate, and they have one vacancy.
Motion?
To accept.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500.
And this one's a leftover from last week on Rail Trail. Brian Rose has been serving as the admin rep, and I volunteered to do it because he's been really busy with the Plan Penargill this year. So, just for this year, I'm willing to take over so he can get his duties done. And also, we, in the past, have had a Selectman Rep to that committee, and we did not make a, an appointment for a Selectman Rep.
Does someone on the board like to?
I said I would check my schedule, and if, if there's notice, if we know when the meetings are, I can do that.
They're usually in the morning.
Mm-hmm, on a Friday morning, usually.
Friday morning, right.
If you can't make it, Nick, I'll back you up. I mean, long, as I know, far enough in advance, like Nick, if Nick can't make it, I'll squeeze it in.
Okay.
While we're on the subject, though, can we find out what this-
Yeah, let's go back to that.
In last week's packet-
The map that we couldn't decipher.
We had the agenda for the Rails to Trail, Rail to Trail Committee meeting, and then there was a map of a section of the trail near Tetro Drive.
Yeah, what goes back. Couldn't decipher the map.
No one knew why it was in the packet.
They were discussing that at their meeting. I don't think any decision has been made on that yet.
Okay.
Remember, we had gotten an easement to go around so people didn't have to walk through traffic?
Right.
They want to extend it to the next parcel.
Okay, makes sense.
Thank you.
But I ran out of that meeting so fast, I didn't get the minutes done. That was on that Friday, so.
All right, thank you.
So, we need a motion on appointing Nick as the Selectman Rep, and Mark as the alternate, and myself to the Rail Trail.
So moved.
You all got that one? And the second is Mark?
Yep.
Okay, have a motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500.
Thank you. Consensus folder tonight includes manifest of general fund AP $85,104.87, and the cable revolving fund for $25. Also, you had a general fund payroll withholding last week, a small one for $3,227.59. There was software issues with our current software, not our new software, we're not online yet. Also, general fund withholding, week ending this May 19th, is $140,836.68, and a cable revolving fund payroll withholding of $393.49. You also have four employee status reports, firefighter two, new hire, laborer, new hire, dispatcher, under probationary period, DPW engineering intern, new hire. You have two event permits, Hubert's Tent Sale, the dates are listed in your packets, and then the Friends of Norris Cotton Cancer Center, the Proudy Ultimate Bike Ride on July 12th, Lynchville Dana's Park Betterment Assessment Warrant, thank you letters to Glenn DuBois for a donation of guns, and Pam Manny, Friends of Parks and Rec, for a donation of $389.67. And appointment papers for the CMAC, Rail Trail, and HDC. And newly added today is confidentiality agreement with Hickey and Associates, which is a firm representing a business looking to relocate in this area. And you have two options in your signature folder for that. Either the board can sign it, or they can authorize me to sign it. What is your preference?
I'm comfortable with authorizing Sue to sign it, Town Administrator, if others are the same here.
It's all signed.
I think it should be signed by the board.
I'm okay with that as well.
What's that?
I'm okay with that as well.
Take that, can you see the word?
Okay.
Two-two so far.
I just, I heard parts of the conversation before. For, for lack of knowledge, what's the difference if the board signs it or Sue signs it? I mean, is there any repercussions that we could?
Well, Sue would sign it with our authorization.
Right.
She's available to sign it.
Sue can have it.
Whoever is brought into the discussion afterwards would probably also have to sign on anyway.
Well, that's just, that's, that's the whole point. The board can't be party to it unless the board signs.
Suggestion, why don't we sign both of them?
Okay. We'll sign both.
And then, the board has that authorization, has that-
And I can provide you with-
And you is, exactly.
Okay.
All right.
So, a motion needed to accept the consensus folder.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Selectman Devanza, seconded by Selectman Campusano.
And just, just for a point of information for anybody that's listening, the firefighter two, new hire, and the laborer, new hire, they're not new positions, they're just replacements for existing positions.
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you.
And you have an assessors' recommendation for reports of timbercut in Map 10 Lot 23, Map 10 Lot 23-1, and Map 10 Lot 30.
Motion to accept the assessors' recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500.
And, Mr. Chairman, after the workshop tonight, we need a non-public on two items, hiring and real estate.
Let's see, it's 10 minutes of 7:00. We have a 7:00 presentation. You all set up and ready? I assume you're all, all set up and ready to go with your presentation? Are you expecting anyone else for the presentation? Should, should we, was this publicly noticed, or is this just for our benefit?
Not anymore. We're both invited for 7:00. Mr. Chairman, you do have some old business that you might be able to do in the next 10 minutes.
Or at least committee reports.
Yeah, we can do the current committee reports, and maybe the ADA parking issue.
Okay.
Okay, do we have, what about, let's just update us on the ADA parking issue.
ADA parking, the school board was fine with creating four handicap accessible spots near the gym entrance. However, they have no funds to do that because they are in default budget. So if the town, or through fundraising, I know the resident had said that he would start a fundraising event, but I don't know who wants to handle that.
Just a question? Yes.
Was there any discussion from, by them of having a fund?
No, I think, they just, I think the question the town had posed to them was, did they have any objection to adding four handicap spots near the entrance? And they had no objection, except they just didn't have funds.
And do we have any estimates of what the cost would be?
We had a broad estimate of $42,000, and I think there was like a 25% contingency in there, 20 or 25%.
So it could be as much as 50. Or contingency within the 40.
That was included in the $42,000, yes.
How much space does that actually take up? How big an area are we talking, four spaces?
Well, one has to be van accessible.
Right.
So that's like almost five spaces, basically. It would match what they have at their main entrance. It'd be about that same size, but further down.
Look at that before you sign on that.
Yeah, look at the...
Further down, meaning where?
You know where the gym entrance is? There's a staircase is coming up, just before the staircase is, is the area that we had...
So you have, we're right near the main entrance, and then these down closer to the gym entrance.
Right.
I have one question on it. When, we had a discussion with Stacy Buckley, I believe it was, and a question that I asked was where those spaces would be during the school day, the doors are locked, you have to go through the main entrance. So if these are ADA spaces, I mean, obviously, it seems to me that they would be marked as ADA spaces, but how do we deal with... I read some of this information, some of the thing from the school, and what I gathered from the school was that the only time these would really be used, that they said that they served no purpose to the school.
During the day, because that's the bustling.
But...
I mean, if the school, anyone going to a basketball game at night, that means handicap accessibility could use it.
Well, but is, is that the way they operate, is what I'm saying? Because are those, those doors are locked during the day. Do they unlock those doors when they have a basketball game?
Yep.
They do.
Yeah. On weekends.
Yep.
So they would be using them?
For after-school events.
Well...
I think her point was they wouldn't be using them during the school day.
I, I guess, my point is that that's a little misleading. Because when I read what was said, it led me to believe that they have no use for those spaces, the only use for those spaces is during Election Day.
Right, for voting.
I, I think they would be useful in the evening, for any event in the gym.
Well, once they're there, they can be used for anything. Obviously, I mean, we'd have to honor those. But we're doing it to accommodate the current, the crowd, the number of people we have during, during elections.
Yes.
Yes.
Selectmen Davanza, as an example, in their current spots, there's a dedicated spot for the School Resource Officer. That spot could be moved to one of the new spaces, freeing up and creating a new handicapped access spot at the main entrance, which they could use every day. And then on elections, they can put one of their portable handicap signs in that School Resource Officer spot. So they, so it could be useful to them, but those new spots really couldn't be used during the day, as you mentioned, because there are buses there.
Well, I'm, I'm not debating whether or not they're usable to them. What, my point was, when I read the minutes from that meeting that we had, when I come away from the minutes and the discussion, that there was really no use to the school for these spaces, except on Election Day. And it was really the town. So that's, that's what my take of reading that was, is that would be...
Yeah, that was, the understanding that came away with it.
So perhaps we need some further discussion to define how much use that they get. And I guess the reason I'm saying that, because if they do have a benefit from it, perhaps the cost could be, could be shared.
But it was also my understanding, if these were recommendations, we'd meet the minimum requirements.
We do.
These are just recommendations.
We can always go above and beyond what ADA requires.
Since we haven't identified where the funding's going to come from to pay for these spaces, then, you know, we're kind of stuck in limbo.
Mr. Chair? I, I don't know if we're stuck in limbo. I think if we, the starting point should be, let's try to get a realistic estimate of what it would cost.
We'll remember.
Then if there are, if there's the will, and we can get through a volunteer and donation process, the materials, the, all of the things we need, and get them built at no cost to either the town or the school, it does serve a purpose, because on Election Day, whenever we have events, town meeting, whatever it is, we've got easier access for handicapped elderly, closer to the...
I agree. My, my point was, for the purpose of tonight, there's no action for us to take.
No.
It's merely for discussion, and, you know, if we can find a way to come up with the money, whether it's donated, whether it's in-kind contributions, whatever, we need to put some thought into that and reach out to, to the community.
I think the first part is to get an accurate estimate of what it's going to cost.
I can send you what Megan had sent me.
Yeah.
I'll put it in your packets next week.
All right.
Week after. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Sue. Let's see if we can get the committee reports, and we still got a few minutes. I wasn't at the sewer commission, so I don't have that report, although I did see they sent some minutes. Are they in? Let's see, summary of the May 14, 2013, Gosstown Sewer Commission Meeting. Don Borre, Town Finance Director, Attended, Explains Accounting and Banking Changes. Estimated cost to the sewer commission in 2014, the utility billing module and 9% of other modules is $48,000. Annual maintenance fee is beginning at $2,400, with yearly 5% increases. CMOM Annual Report Comments, the report was accepted by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services with just two comments. Continue to develop the easement list and adopt a formal program to address the inflow, infiltration, inflow issue. As far as committee assignments, they remain the same. Jim Bouchard elected as chairman for 2013-14. They'll be presenting to the capital, the capital improvement program on May 30. There are no changes to sewer commission properties were noted. Sewer rate study, Mike Trank presented the proposal and recommended engaging Public Resources Management Group as a subconsultant, and not to exceed costs of $24,350. Well, Tanner Associates will manage the evaluation, be completed, completed in six months. The commission approved and signed the agreement for professional engineering services. Town contracted with supplier Intergis, Intergurus, for a 12-month period. Sewer pump station electricity is included in that contract. And as far as projects, the Violet Street subdivision has been approved by Department of Environmental Services. Muscat Park apartment sewer lines are in. The Auto Zone Commercial Building has been working with Mike Yurjow to finalize the sewer line size and location on the Mast Road. And that was the business conducted at the May 14 Sewer Commission meeting.
I had the library. And Parks and Recals.
And budget.
We got a few.
Pick them up later?
Yeah, why don't we pick them up later? 7:00. All right, 7:00 has arrived. It is time for our joint meeting with the Planning Board and Economic Development Council for a presentation on the I-293 Exit 6 and 7 Planning Study. Do we have members here who are going to present to the study?
Good evening.
Keith, how are you, Keith?
Hey, Ben.
Good, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Presentation behind you.
Yeah, I'm complying. I might want to turn that, this light out.
First, my name is Keith Coda, Chief Project Manager for the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. And with me is Marty Kennedy from VHB. He's basically our lead engineer, working with us on the consultant for, for the study, quarter study, six and seven. Also have with me Nancy Spalding, one of our project engineers out of our, Nancy?
Preliminary designer.
Preliminary designer, Bureau of Highway Design.
And Keith, before you get into your presentation, could we have members of the Planning Board and the Economic Development Council here introduce themselves as well, so we know who's in the audience? That would be helpful. Start up front, front left. Tony?
Tony?
I'm, what am I?
Master.
You're sitting in the dark right now, but I'm...
I'm the town's public member to the DOT's Technical Advisory Committee on this particular project. That's my only official role.
Thank you.
With me is Mr. Langley from the EDC.
Steve Langley, Chair of the EDC.
Steve, about in the second row. We know Senator, Senator DeLisandro, so...
Chris Nado from the Planning Board.
Hey, Chris.
Aye.
Keep going.
Derek Horn from Economic Development Council.
Charlie Fendt is Economic Development Council.
Charlie, thank you.
Dick Rudolph from Economic Development.
Thank you. Is that everyone? Thank you.
I'd also point out that we have the honor of having Senator DeLisandro with us this evening.
Oh, yes, he's, he's addressed the board already. Hello again.
But we certainly appreciate the opportunity to come to town and give you an overview of where we are and where we are going relative to the quarter analysis for the I-293 at Exit 6 and 7. Very important project. We, we all recognize that, that it has deficiencies that really need to be, need to be addressed. The approach that we're basically taking is, is the, we're looking to do a quarter analysis to get an understanding as to what the, the, the major issues are, and what some of the potential solutions may be, as we can carry forward into the next phase of the project. This analysis here is basically, just gets us up through the point of, of looking to carry the project forward into the next stage of environmental analysis, and actually more refined alternative analysis, where you actually develop our environmental documentation. Federal Higher Administration actually has agreed to be our lead federal agency on, on this project. So our environmental documentation would be processed through the Federal Higher Administration. Right now, the funding on this project is, is moving toward our Turnpike Expansion Program. We have funding in place right now for this quarter analysis. We do not have any further funding to carry this project forward in the next phase or construction at this time. That is an element where we're expecting the conclusion of this study here, come toward the end of the summer, we'll be going back to the GASSI Committee, the Transportation Committee, to basically look at the next 10-year plan development, and incorporate the, the project more efficiently into the program, as well as looking at our capital program for the Turnpike Program, and determine how we can basically raise the bonding limits to allow the project to be carried forward. There is some very good opportunities coming forward here. We know from representations from, from the town on our, on our steering committee for this project, there's certainly some, some transportation issues that, that the town would like us to try to incorporate into the project. We, we hear that. And what I'd like to do is have Marty just kind of go through an overview of where we, where we've been and where we're going, and then we certainly can answer any questions that you have. All right?
Thanks, Keith. Let me just, let me just point out that I'm with Vanessa Hang in Brussels and Marty Kennedy. We're the lead consultant on the team, but we're also working with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and OCG Associates, who are also on our, our team. The purpose of the planning study is, is to address the capacity and safety-related deficiencies along the, both the main line and the interchanges, particularly Exit 6 and 7, of this about a three-mile section of, of I-293. And as part of that, we're also looking at the potential relocation of Exit 7 further to the, to the north. The corridor itself, this starts just, down here is just where the Granite Street Interchange is just off the, off the map here. So this is the southern end, and the corridor basically starts just north of that, and extends northward to, this is the Exit 6 interchange, this is the existing Exit 7, and up in the area in here is where we're looking at potentially relocating Exit 7s. That's, that's the corridor that we're, we're focused on in the study. There is a technical advisory committee that we've been working very closely with throughout the study. Members of that committee include the New Hampshire DOT, but also Federal Highway, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, officials from the City of Manchester, the Town of Gosstown, Town of Hooksett, also the Greater Manchester Chamber of Commerce, the Hooksett Chamber of Commerce, the Manchester Community College, and also State Senator Booton sits on the, on the committee. We do have a, a project website. The address is www.293planningstudy.com. And that, that website allows anyone to go on and to take a look at anything from, any type of documents we're putting together, meeting minutes. It also has videos of various public meetings on there. But what it really has that's very nice is a, is a feedback page that allows individuals to, to go in and either ask questions, or put in comments, or suggestions and ideas, and those come directly to me, and I can respond to those directly by, by email. We've got some very good suggestions for our potential solutions and other comments through the, that feedback page. Let me just start out with the, the overall schedule. We started this project, it's probably just about a year, a little over a year ago. Last, last spring, we began work on the project, and we've broken it out into four phases. The first phase extended from the spring and into the summer of last year, and that included our data collection effort, which meant going out and collecting traffic volume counts, and all the, collecting, putting together environmental resource mapping, and preparing the traffic model, and all of that. And then as we moved into the fall, we moved into what we call Phase 2, and that's where we started having, after having some initial public meetings and working with the advisory committee, we started doing our brainstorming, coming up with potential solutions. What came out of that was, we went into Phase 3, which was the winter and the spring of this year. And that was really the meat of the work we were doing, and we're just finishing up that phase. And that's where we're actually developing, evaluating, and screening various alternatives. And I'm going to show you those alternatives tonight, because we're getting to the, to the point, the end of that Phase 3. In fact, we're going to be having a, a public meeting on June 11th. It's actually going to be at the Manchester Community College, where we'll be presenting the alternatives and the results of the, the evaluation of the alternatives. After that meeting, we'll go into what we call Phase 4, and that is now that we've presented the, the evaluation of the alternatives, we've got input from everyone, then it's just a matter of documented, putting the reports together, with the idea of having the study done by the end of this summer. Again, we, just to give you a sense, we, we've had a number of meetings. We've had about three diff, three public meetings, I think we've had about seven advisory committee meetings. We've had briefings similar to, similar to what we're doing here tonight with the City of Manchester, and also with the Town of Hooksett. And we've also had other, even other meetings. We've done a presentation for the, the Manchester Chamber of Commerce, and we've had some coordination meetings with the college and all those types of things. So we, we've tried as best we can to get the word out throughout the study of what's going on on the project. Back in, I think it was in September, we had a workshop, where some of you may have attended, where we asked people who came to, to let us know what they saw as the problems and the issues and constraints, and also some potential solutions. And that's really what got us going, and some of the brainstorming of identifying what the problems were and what were the potential solutions. This is not a complete list, but let me just quickly run through some of the types of problems that we heard and identified at that point. Poor sight lines along the, along the main line, queuing onto the highway, particularly up at the northbound on-ramp at Exit 6, high-speed weaving, short on-ramps, limited acceleration length, the vehicle crashes, confusion, congestion up at Exit 6 on the MSG Circle, highway noise, truck access to Gosstown. noise, truck access to Goffstown, congestion, safety at the Manchester Community College intersection that's on Front Street, and limited access at the existing Exit 7 location. Again, the list is much, much longer than this, but this is some of the ones, some of the highlights of what, some of the issues that we heard. So with that, we've developed a number of conceptual alternatives to try to address the problems that were identified. I'm going to spend a little time now just running through those alternatives so you can get a sense of what those are. I put this note up, and I try to remind everyone, some of the concepts that I'll show tonight, they actually look and start looking like real design plans, but keep in mind, this is still a planning study. And so, you know, we're in the early phases here, and it's, when we lay these plans down, inevitably, you know, lines go into somebody's property, and it's much too early to be talking about, you know, property acquisitions and exact point on these plans. So just, I try to remind everyone when I show these. Let me start with Exit 6, and this is the existing Exit 6 interchange. And again, some of the issues and problems that we heard were, you know, we've got the heading northbound coming into Exit 6, we're coming around this curve, we've got traffic backed up from the ramp, it actually backs onto the main line here, sight distance is poor coming around that turn, you have heavy congestion up on the circle with weaving occurring through here, getting to try and get to the traffic signals at the Amoskeg Bridge. The northbound on-ramp has a very, it doesn't have a very long acceleration lane here, and so once you pull out, you're right onto the main line. Heading in the southbound direction, you have a heavy weaving condition where you have heavy volume entering at this point and exiting at that point, and a lot of weaving going on right in here.
I know what it is to be you, so...
That's right. Everybody's very aggressive. We also have this smaller southern ramp that comes on from Eddie Road at this point. Again, you know, not much of an acceleration length, you have people really coming in, starting from a stop condition and getting onto the highway there. So those are some of the issues that we're trying to address with these various alternatives. The first alternative I'm going to show you is what we call a single-point urban interchange. This is, a single-point urban is what is, was recently constructed at Exit 5 at Granite Street. And so here would be the single-point interchange here at Amoskeg with the on-ramp, southbound off-ramp, southbound on-ramp, northbound off-ramp, and northbound on-ramp. Let me point out that one difference here between, with this single point that's different than the Exit 5 Granite Street is that in this case, I-293 would actually be passing underneath the single point. So the single point is up on top as opposed to Granite Street, it's the other way around. Now, with this alternative, and this single point means there's a single traffic signal at that location where all the ramps come in to that single point. This is the location where the existing Front Street and Goffstown Road signalized intersection is. Under this configuration, that intersection would be too close to that point in order to have another full-way signalized intersection there. So under this alternative, what we needed to do in order to provide all the connections necessary here is to have, Front Street actually would go underneath, so Goffstown Road would come up and up and over I-293, Front Street would pass underneath, and then there'd be an intersection down in this area somewhere with another crossing of I-293 that comes into a signal here. That would provide any of the connections to Eddie Road and Front Street to get over to the Amoskeg roadway. And so, it's basically a single point, very similar to Granite Street. The primary difference here is because of this intersection, we want to provide connections at all of those points, we need to have this additional connection at this point. One other aspect of this alternative that I want to talk about is there, as I mentioned, is this existing smaller southbound on-ramp at this location. When we looked at upgrading here and providing these ramps, you know, obviously if you provide sufficient capacity here, you don't need an additional ramp at this point. However, under this particular configuration, because traffic that comes up to Eddie Road and today uses that ramp, it gets on that point, under the single point, they would have to come up Eddie Road, come to this intersection, take a right-hand turn, come to another signalized intersection, take a left-hand turn, and at that signal, we'd get back on the southbound ramp. That's a little out of the way, and I suspect what would happen is that a lot of motorists today who come up and use that southbound ramp, they would stay on the local roads and head down to Exit 5, and that's going to cause other problems. So what we're suggesting is under this alternative, that we maintain that little slip ramp. It would be widened and provided sufficient acceleration through there, so it would be designed appropriately, but under this configuration, we would want to maintain that, make sure we keep traffic off the local street. Should also point out that on these various alternatives, what we're talking about is widening I-293 and adding one additional lane in each direction. So today, it's two lanes in each direction. These concepts show that you would have a three-lane section, three lanes in each direction. Now, under the single-point alternative, heading in the southbound direction, because the volume is relatively heavy getting off that ramp and then getting back on that ramp, what we're able to do is bring that three lanes that are heading south, as they come down, you have three lanes, and it comes into the intersection, we can actually drop one of those lanes at that point after you get beyond that off-ramp. And what that allows us to do is when you come on and you have the traffic entering at this point at this southbound on-ramp, now it adds the third lane back on. So now that lane doesn't have to merge into a lane, it basically has its own lane, and that works from an operational standpoint much better. Obviously, this would be a merge at this point onto the three-lane section, but again, it would be designed sufficiently, have enough acceleration lane. So anyway, that's the single-point urban interchange. Now, and again, notice what's happening is the interchange is located right over here at Amoskeg and Goffstown Road. The next alternative I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you a series of alternatives that have what we call a various diamond configurations. And this one is a standard diamond interchange. The difference here is that the connection is over here now between Eddie Road and Amoskeg as opposed to the ramps being over here. So we have the northbound off-ramp comes into a signal at a diamond interchange, the northbound on-ramp enters at that point, you've got the southbound off-ramp coming into a signalized intersection, and the southbound on-ramp goes on at that point. And so connections would be made through Eddie Road, you'd have connections from Goffstown Road to Amoskeg Bridge, and under this condition, the Front Street intersection, you would maintain that connection from Front Street, but it would be a T-intersection. It would not have, would not go through, so now you'd have connections from Front Street to turn to Goffstown Road or turn down to Amoskeg, but any connections that wanted to continue from Eddie Road to Front Street would have to do that connection right in through here. That's the only difference between that. And also, under this condition, because, under this, as opposed to what we talked about with the single point, we would not need to provide this ramp because now those movements could come on Eddie Road and get on relatively easy right here, so they didn't have to do that long routing. So under the diamond configurations, we would not have that ramp, we would close that, and that movement would occur at that one location. Now, the next alternative I'm going to show you is actually a very similar layout to this, a diamond interchange. The only difference is what's called a diverging diamond interchange. So everything is laid out exactly the same thing, except the configuration is different here. And this is what a diverging diamond is, it's a different configuration, and actually it's, for this local area, actually within New England, it's very unconventional because there are none, I don't think there are any within, in the New England area. And it's laid out such that the signals here and here, the particular diamond, are such that the section between those two signals, the, you actually, when you come off the ramp, as opposed to a standard diamond where you'd wait for a signal, take a left-hand turn, cross the traffic, and then head in that direction, under a diverging diamond, what happens is you come out and take a left-hand turn, and you stay on this side of the bridge. So you're actually traveling on the left-hand side of the road, and that occurs on both sides, just between the two signals. And the reason why you do that is that it's actually, it's more efficient. You actually, a lot, you can have two simple two-phase signals at these intersections as opposed to a three-phase signal you would normally have at a diamond configuration. The upside of this is it's more efficient, you can process traffic better. The downside is people who aren't familiar with it, a little confusing, and so those are the considerations we're talking about here. But everything else, the layout is exactly the same as the standard diamond interchange. We also have another alternative that we were looking at, same general layout, diamond configuration, the only difference is two roundabouts as opposed to signalized intersections at the interchange. I'll tell you that, and we've done all the evaluations on these, and I'm not going to get into all the analysis here tonight, but I'll tell you that the, this alternative, the roundabout configurations, they really don't work very well, and this one's not going to go, not going to go very far in the process here. But that is an alternative that we were looking at. Another option that we have here is, what we're calling is it, it's an offset diamond because it sort of does, it's a little bit of a diamond configuration here on the north side, as you have the off-ramp coming into Amoskeg and the on-ramp, northbound on-ramp in this area. But what we've done is have the southbound ramps, instead of being located up here at Goffstown and Amoskeg, they're pushed down here further onto Eddie Road. And by doing that, it allows you to have, maintain the Front Street, Goffstown Road, Amoskeg intersection, four-way intersection at that point here. Now, in doing, under this alternative, what we have is, there's actually a signalized intersection here where traffic would come off, get off this ramp, and it could take a right-hand turn to head back towards Goffstown Road or Front Street or to Amoskeg, or it could take a left at this signal to head down to Eddie Road. Now, if you think of the heavy volume today that's heading southbound, getting on this ramp that we've taken out and to get on the southbound traffic, if we just had a normal traffic signal at this point, that heavy volume would have to come down and take a left-hand turn at the signalized intersection to get on that ramp. That doesn't work very well because of the volume of traffic. And so, under this alternative, what we have is that left turn does not come into the signal, this actually goes into this right turn and gets on this little ramp and goes up and over and enters the highway in that fashion. And that, any traffic coming up Eddie Road, again, you would not need that connection, that would come up and get onto a loop ramp and get on and head southbound. And so this is another, kind of a somewhat, between the, kind of the single point and the diamond configurations, so it's a little different, but what this one allows you to do is to have these on and off ramps, but also allows you to maintain the intersection at Front Street and Goffstown Road. By the way, there would be a lot of traffic heading through that point because we're processing everything through, and you can see that's a very wide intersection at that point. And just, before I move on from these, I just want to point out a couple of things as we step back. On any of these diamond configurations, you'll notice that this section, whether it be the roundabouts or the diverging diamond or the standard diamond, this section from Amoskeg through this intersection, almost all of the traffic is going through that point, and this, getting this to work is difficult. We've got a lot of lanes here, and so I can tell you just from an efficiency perspective, there is a real advantage to the single point because you take all of the ramp movements out at this point, and then you can handle this other traffic sort of kind of around it. But it's just, again, just, those are the main differences between those various alternatives. At this point, what I want to do is step up to Exit 7. And at Exit 7, first thing, this is the existing Front Street ramps, where you have the off-ramp, on-ramp, and you have no connections to and from the north, and that's what we want to do. All the alternatives here are going to look at providing connections both to the north as well as the south at Exit 7. Now, as I said, we're going to be looking at alternatives relocating this Exit 7 further to the north, but one of the alternatives we need to look at, is it possible to upgrade Exit 7 and provide those ramps at the existing location? So one of the alternatives is to look at, again, widening I-293 through here, providing a diamond configuration and providing ramps that would have both the southbound access and northbound access. And that's how that configuration would look like. It would be a diamond interchange to signals, and you'd have your both north and southbound ramps. One other consideration we gave when we started looking at this was if we have, and I'll show you just in a moment, the, where we're relocating the ramped further to the north, when you do that, you have a connection from the new interchange over to Dunbothan Road. And then the question would be, well, if you're looking at this configuration and you were comparing it to another location further to the north on the other side of the landfill, and you had a connection to Dunbothan Road, maybe would it make sense to provide a connection to Dunbothan Road here? So we looked at that, and what we've found and what we determined is that, you know, geometrically, you could do this. I mean, you can, you know, the topography and the land is such that you could actually build that. The problem becomes is that the volume of traffic on Front Street that wants to continue along Front Street is still relatively high volume, and in our opinion, it really wouldn't make a lot of sense to bring it up and then have it bring it back down to this intersection of Front Street and head in that direction. So again, we've looked at this, but I don't know that this is going to go too far. By the way, before I leave this section, this is Exit 6, this is the existing Exit 7, and one other issue with reconstructing Exit 7 at an existing location is the distance and the spacing between Exit 6 and Exit 7. Those interchanges are very close, and normally you want to have more spacing between those. We've shown that we can make this operate acceptably. The distance here between these ramps is about 1,600 feet. It's a little tight, but in order to make that work, we'd have to do a little bit more widening in this section. Actually, there'd be a little weave section between the ramps, and we actually, for a short distance, actually have four lanes in each direction on the main line there. So there's a little bit more widening, a little bit more property impacts and so on when you build the interchange at existing, the existing Exit 7 location. Now, if we had moved further to the north, where the, we're looking to relocate Exit 7, this is the area that we'd be looking to move Exit 7 to. This is the landfill, and Front Street is down in here. This is the existing Exit 7 is at this point. So we looked at an interchange configuration that would look something like this, where you'd have a off-ramp and an offbound on-ramp, you'd have an off-ramp that would come into a signal here, and here we're showing the on-ramp, the southbound on-ramp would be a loop. Reason for that is to stay away from the landfill, and so you basically have a diamond configuration with one loop that would provide all of the connections. We would also provide connections both westwardly to Dunbothan Road and also down to Front Street. There'd be a new road that would connect, you'd have a signal down here at Front Street. We'd also need to be able to provide access and connections to the college, which is located right in here, and also this residential area in here. So under this configuration, we're showing some connections and probably some type of an intersection between the two that would provide access to those land uses. We've had, actually have a couple of alternatives, alignments for this. Here, we're bringing, this one brings the intersection at this point. We have another one that brings it in in this point, and frankly, there's, from a construction standpoint, there's not a whole lot of difference between the two. Ultimately, this is going to be probably, the determining factor here will be which one works best for, you know, the college and the residential areas here, but they both can be constructed and we both have connections to Front Street. If we extend out looking to the west, what we're showing is a connection here to Dunbothan Road. Now, in addition to that, we, I know that the town has expressed certainly a strong desire to provide a connection from Goffstown Road, which is up in this area, over to this new interchange. And I'll tell you, we've, there was a, I don't know if I have it right, yeah, there was a previous alignment done a number of years ago that looked at something like this and sort of hugged this landfill area right in here. You'll notice... You'll notice that we're over here more. The reason why we've shown this, this way is that the grades in this area are really substantial. And I'll show you, I think I have, this is just a quick profile sketch that we had, but this shows the older, that old, older profile of that alignment close to the landfill, and the way this, the way you'd read this is, this is actually the area right in here where the new interchange would be, and this line is the existing land. And as you head west in this direction, you can see it gets very steep in that area. This pro, this line shows an eight percent grade, where if we ran a new road through here, tight to the landfill, we'd be up at an eight percent grade, at, right near where we're bringing the ramps in, that's pretty steep. And then also, even with the eight percent grade, we've got about a 48-foot cut that still, that's to give an idea, it's, it's pretty substantial in that area. And for that matter, if you were down at a four percent grade, something you'd want closer where the, where the ramps come in, you know, it's about an 80-foot cut. So, my point is, is that in this area, it really is very steep, and so that's why we're over here. Now, I'll point out that we're showing, we're looking at really two primary alternatives for relocating seven. One is construct a new interchange in this area that provides connection to Dunbatten Road, and a second one that has, provides a reconstructed, relocated interchange that provides connection not only to Dunbatten Road, but also over to Goffstown, to Goffstown Road. Now, what we've, what we've showed here is the location where the original alignment was for this connection. You know, we've also been looking at, there may be other potential connections over on this side that if the road did in fact come in here, that the connection could be possibly made over here. I think ultimately where we are on this is that we'll be recommending that you go into the next, the next phase, the part B of this, of the study, and we start looking at more, a more detailed evaluation, is that we really need to take a harder look at this, that if you're going to build this interchange, and if this connection is going to happen, whether it's here or somewhere further on this side, that this be coordinated with it. So, right now, we're showing a connection here with this being an intersection and an intersection here, but these could look completely different, whether, you know, this ties into Dunbatten Road, if that's the main road, or vice versa. So, that's where we are on, on those different configurations. So, again, just to, just to wrap up, where we are right now is at the end of this phase three. As I said earlier, we have a meeting, a public meeting scheduled for June 11th, stay over at the Community College, where we're going to be presenting these alternatives and the, kind of the results of the evaluation of the alternatives. And so, I guess I would hope that, you know, anybody from, that's interested in the project, you know, come out to that public meeting, because we'll be looking for input from that. So, that's all I have, any questions?
May I get a copy of your presentation, please, Dave?
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll email you the PowerPoint.
Great.
As Marty indicated, the, the alternatives that we are screening right now, they're basically just conceptual alternatives, I really haven't put a lot of detail into the, the overall environmental evaluation, just kind of more of the, the upper, upper level analysis. The other thing that we, we also were able to do with this, with the study so far is that we're able to use the regional planning's traffic modeling for our analysis, try to get an understanding as to what the traffic distribution is going to be for these different alternatives. The way the model is right now, it, it's a good regional model, and it certainly helps from a regional sense, but when you start looking at these alternatives, you start looking more down to the, to the street level of what traffic is doing, it's really not that type of a model for this, but it gives, it does give us a reasonable understanding as to what we could expect. As we, as we venture forward into the next phase of this project, during the preliminary engineering and environmental documentation, one of the things that we'll be looking to do is take that regional model and actually break it down into a sub-model and actually look at this specific area where we, where we basically calibrate that model. And from that, from that evaluation, we'll, we'll be able to look at each of these alternatives and actually factor in, what is the, what is the displacement of traffic from one road to the other as a result of these connections? So, so as it stands right now, our recommendation that is, is going to be coming forward as we go into documentation phases, is basically documenting these alternatives as reasonable approaches that, that need to be evaluated in the next phase of the project. That includes the connection to Goffstown Road and Dunbatten Road. So, so we don't have the answers right now, but we know that, that it still needs to be evaluated, and, and it still needs to go through the environmental test process, which will be our next phase of the project. But like Marty indicated, we're hoping that by the September, October timeline, we'll have documentation, and we'll start our review with several of the legislative and transportation committees, as well as the governor and the advisory committee on the transportation system, and then, and look at what we can, how we can carry this project forward efficiently. We'll open for, any questions, or, and we'll try to answer them?
Maybe we can bring the lights back up so that we can converse with one another?
Wow, that seems to be great.
And I'll just start with a comment, Keith, if I may. My biggest concern is making sure that we can bring traffic from I-293 to Goffstown Back Road easily and efficiently, because it's one of our main entrances to Goffstown. You probably know this, an industrial park out there that was approved some time ago, you've had no takers, and one of the reasons is because traffic can't get there easily. They've got to come down Goffstown Back Road, Manchester has slapped traffic, truck restrictions on it, which has hurt us. So, I want to make sure that we look at an alternative, whether it's at exit six, all of those seem very convoluted to me, I can't imagine, you know, somebody want to bring a truck through all of those lights and loop-de-loops to try and get onto the back, the back road and bring, and you know, bring commerce and economic growth to Goffstown. So, to me, it looks like we're focusing on moving exit seven something up north of the, the landfill. But again, my, my primary issue is to make sure that we bring, can bring that traffic into Goffstown, get it onto Back Road, so we can open up some of that land for development and stimulate some economic growth there. So, the closer we can bring it off that, stay in Goffstown territory and bring it onto Back Road, the better. So, that, that really is my main concern.
And is economic development one of your evaluation criteria?
Economic development is an element of the environmental evaluation. This is where it really comes down to, is, is one of the other functions of the study that we're doing now, the corridor analysis, is what we're hoping to come out of this is, is a purpose and need statement for the project. And the, the caution that we have is, is if the project is solely for economic development, then it reaches another higher level in the environmental process. We've certainly had a couple of projects in the state that was solely for economic development, whether it's the exit four A down in, in London Dairy, or whether it's the exit 10, exit 10 over in, in the Dover-Somersworth area. But when you start putting that economic development as your purpose and need, it gets looked at very, very cautiously, because it basically says, all right, if you're looking at economic development, then you need to evaluate what the potential land use, land use impact is going to be as a result of that and mitigate those impacts. It basically results in the push by the resource agencies to, to look at land, to buy land for conservation purposes, to basically protect. So, you kind of have the balance between the two. Our purpose here is, is looking at the safety and capacity of I-293. That is our primary focus. Certainly a secondary benefit being, being improving access to, to communities for, for land use, land use enhancements, certainly is an element that we're looking at. But I don't believe that we'll be looking at economic development being the purpose and need of this project. But it is an element, we understand that from, from Goffstown perspective. Certainly, the alternatives that we have for exit seven still provide that connectivity to carry forward into the next, into the next evaluation. So, it's, it's, it's good that it's there, you know, that, as it come out through this phase of the study, that it's still, still in the, in the works.
Yes, Carl?
Carl, I say, Marty, I might have dozed off and missed it, but I don't think you put up the, the resource map, because I think it's important for Goffstown to understand the environmental hurdle with that alternative. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, actually, I don't, I don't have it, but I can show you where it is on the, on the concept itself.
That, that crossing...
Sorry about that.
That crossing has proposed a very, very large wetland area.
Let me turn this one.
Yeah, see, this, this area, the environment, get it, get the permitting of that is not going to be easy, and that's why I said that, we've actually been even tossing around the idea, you know, maybe this, if, if the connection is this way, and you've got the Star, Star Road-Dunbatten Road intersection, which is really a fully aligned intersection today, to say the least, you know, at some point, that maybe needs to be reconfigured. Well, you know, maybe up in that area, there's a way to get across the brook, and then maybe you have that connection down Star Road, and so, I, all I'm saying is, I don't want to prejudge any of this, but crossing here is, is difficult from an environmental permitting perspective.
I have a comment.
I guess, I mean, I can't, I can't draw that from that, but I don't see all the signatures for that one, certainly there's a...
If you're drawing on the blue, you'd see it.
Yeah, actually, I'll be, I'll be showing that at the, the June 11th meeting.
But Marty is correct, Carl's also, that you look at the, the wild, the natural environment, certainly the area from Dunbatten Road to Gofftown Road connection is, is the area that has the greatest, greatest impact into the natural environment, whether it's the wetland syst, wetland systems or the flood, floodplain systems or the wildlife corridors and so, and so on. So, it's a challenging quarter from an environmental sense. We need to basically be able to prove that is, that is the, the best alternative for, for the purpose of the project. And our challenge, our next phase challenge is, is going to try to identify what is the least damaging practical, feasible alternative. So, it's, but we need to take a look at all that. It is a challenge crossing that section of the road.
Okay, let's, again, can we turn the lights up so we can see?
It's just a question of the landfill. And if any time, any time you intrude on that landfill, I think we've always been concerned about seepage underneath, and seepage into the roof, but I think, if that were, would it be unstabilized in some factor? I mean, you're going to have to widen, widen that road. What, what kind of action does that bring about from EPA?
Well, I'll just, I'll just tell you, we're trying to stay away from the landfill as best as we can for that very reason.
So, you have to?
Yeah.
And what I understand is that the college is now looking for, Nick, you maybe know about this, the college is looking for a fire road?
Yes.
At, at the present time, have you heard that one?
Yes, we're, we're currently working with the college, they're looking, well, what they have approached the department, or turn, or turnpike bureau, they're looking for emergency access ramp to the turnpike to allow for, for, for emergency components.
And what, and what does that do to, to any configuration that you may, you may bring forward?
Yeah, well, to address two points, relative to the landfill. One of the, one of the reasons why the alternatives for exit seven is scurrying further to the north is for that purpose, is to stay away from the landfill influence. The alternative that, the old alternative that was close to the landfill that had 50 to 80 feet of excavation, there's no question in my mind, we probably would be into that, and typically when we get into that, we begin owning that, that issue. And it is very complex engineering to keep that, reach it from, from going, it, from where it is. So, our objective is to try to stay outside the influence of, of the landfill as per any alternatives. Now, as for the, the college, they're expanding, there's no question, that, that college has expanded quite a bit, continues to look at, at expansion. They know right now, they're having problems on Front Street from an operational sense, no question they are. As a result of that operational problems, because of the traffic congestion that occurs there, they came to the department through our Bureau of Turnbikes and asking for considerations of emergency, emergency ramp for, for first responders in case they're, they get into the site or can't get into the site, they have an alternative means of getting, getting into the, and, and to the, to the certain emergency needs. That's a temporary. If we grant that, which I anticipate, we'd be certainly looking positive at it, that it would only be there during a duration that, that it's needed for the current layout of the college, with a new connection for exit seven coming down, with a new access connection, they still have two access points, so still have the Front Street and they still have the new, new access, so they'll have the double alternative, the double access alternative, so they won't be needing that emergency access at that point. So, we're working with the college, that's one of the reasons why the college is actually on our, on our committee too, because they certainly have a strong interest in the project.
And it, it comes that, if you see me, about that. The, the, the original layout of, of the road, the original layout, like when you built the FEA for turnpike, and the disaster was the swing.
Yes.
And, and we did that to save money. Okay, I talked with Woodabour about this 40 years ago. So, by making that mistake, what we've done is put high costs on everything that we do from this point on. But this, from a safety standpoint, that's got to be fixed. I, I witness accidents there almost every morning, particularly those people entering the turn, the turnpike, they come from leftbound Back Road, come from Front Street and, you know, boy, they're banging and going on, on the northbound side. If you have a, a large vehicle that's cruising up there and another tries to get on, they try to race each other, and, and in the long run, the little guy goes off to the side. So, so they're, they're very dangerous situations, and what we did with the roadie when we fixed that years and years ago, that, that really didn't solve, didn't solve a problem. But those bridges are corroded, they've fallen apart, we've got to check, we've got to fix those. I think all of those three bridges are suspect. There's, as I said, we're spending more money on chicken wire to hold, to keep the debris from falling on the cars. So, expensive project, but something that has to be done. Question is, where does it fit in the 10-year plan? How do you get it in? And, and from Goffstown's standpoint, certainly opening up the way, it just makes, it makes a lot of sense. When you put the safety aspect there, it fits nicely in with opening that up. So, I think it mitigates, if you have economics as the, as the primary factor, I think that's secondary to safety. I've seen a lot of these projects over the years.
Yes. Certainly, you hit the nail on the head relative to the operational problems out there. And you're right, back, back 40 years ago when we built the facility, it was an easy quarter to acquire, and, and the vision was back then, as we wouldn't know now, it probably wouldn't be where it is today. It has caused us some complications, certainly with the, with the higher flow of traffic we have, the higher speed of our automobiles, the ease of flow of people driving the way they do, it certainly causes complications. But it is a geometric location, especially the sweeping, sweeping S-curbs is an area that we still have to maintain, or otherwise we're going to have some very big right-of-way damages in order to really fix it. So, we're going to work our best to try to improve the situation we have. The project itself, again, the, the purpose of the corridor analysis that we're doing here is, is to get a firm understanding that we have some reasonable alternatives that we need to evaluate, and, and we're, we're very confident that's what's coming out of this corridor analysis. Like I said, we will be working with the, the governor's commission on highways, the GAC committee, as we look into the next 10-year plan. Regional Planning Commission for, for the, the area, we'll be working with them to identify what their top priority projects are, which I would presume from Goffstown's perspective as well as Manchester's perspective, it would be one of the top priorities from a regional sense, so it can be supported as it carries into the 10-year plan. So, the, the first chore that we're looking to do with the conclusion of the study is to get the project incorporated into the 10, next, around 10-year plan. Where it sets in the priority levels, we'll leave it to the GAC committee, governor's, governor's committee in transportation determine where that's going to be. But it also falls into the second realm of it, and that is the money. How are we going to pay for this? The question, the big question the department has is, is whether the funding for this will be all through turnbikes or whether it needs to be a shared funding in some other, some other approaches. So, we haven't really put our arms around that, we know that from a... We know that from a turnpike, turnpike program. We need to look at that program, because we do anticipate the major investments through the quarter itself. I-293 quarter would probably be a turnpike program. But the connections outside where that funding comes from, we're still kind of balancing what that might be. But, but certainly, getting it in 10-year plan, at least getting a portion of the funding set through our capital, capital program, through our turnpike program, allows us to carry the project. And, and again, I caution that, you know, if the purpose here is gonna go on economic development, then, you know, we're, we're expecting the project based upon the analysis that we're seeing so far, it's probably gonna environment, be an environmental assessment instead of our higher order document, an environmental impact statement. But typically, when you start looking at economics as the, as the purpose, you're, you're approaching the higher order document. It takes years to go through those.
And I'd like to follow up, and I'm not gonna let go of this bone that easy.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, I agree, we need to build our highway safe. But our highways are built to move things, to move people, to move goods. It's for commerce. It's what it's all about. And if we build highways and we don't have that in the back of our mind, then I think we're doing ourselves and the next generation a big disservice. So that they aren't sitting here saying, why didn't those knuckleheads back in 2013 allow for some access to this highway as we continue to grow? I understand there's some environmental concerns, but I mean, we, we managed to deal, our DOT managed to deal with environmental concerns, day in and day out on all of their projects. You know, we, we see it all the time, it can be done, and I just don't wanna give up on that part of the project too, too easily.
Yes, and I can't, can't disagree with you, Carlos, that, you know, certainly, if there was a big pot of money that's available, certainly it makes it easier. But as you know, from the legislative approaches, at least from the message that the commissioner has been going out to the communities and, and places, is that, you know, we have very limited amount of funds with a big list of projects that need to be done. And the amount of money that we have coming through our system can't handle even what we have now, let alone you add these other components, these, these economic elements, then, which, where's the priority? So really, we have to address a larger issue relative to, to transportation funding in this state. Because, you know, without transportation funding, I can almost guarantee you that economic is not gonna be your priority when you have all these other safety issues, bridges falling down that needs to be replaced, intersections that are causing fatalities, fatalities, these become the higher priorities first before you have ability to look at these other transportation.
And I understand and recognize all of that, and the dollar certainly plays a big role in all of this, but, you know, I think, I just don't wanna give Gothstown the short end of the stick on this. But anyways, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let others comment.
One of the things, one thing we don't wanna do is not preclude it from ever happening.
Right, exactly. So let's have some other, yes, I can't see.
I think we're following up, what you were saying is, all projects, all, everything, it all comes down to where there's a will, there's a way. And if what you're saying is, the safety aspect is a primary concern, understandable. Obviously, from Gothstown, we're hoping for the side benefit of the economic development. So I think as far as getting it through the legislature, it's all gonna come down to the wording. And if people really want it to happen, it can be worded properly, so it can be addressed on the safety aspect, fully understanding that the byproduct would help Gothstown on the economic development side, and if it helps us bring in more business for our tax base, that's going to help New Hampshire with their tax base as well.
That's correct.
That should all be.
And that, and that comes down to the, one of the other elements of the conclusion of this quarter analysis, developing that, that purpose and need set. And you're, you're very true, you're very correct.
So a hand in the back over here, yes.
I see the purposes, you know, the, the safety, the environmental reasoning. Everybody in this room agrees that that 293 Amisca Bridge circle was a mess. So the, I would think the purpose of building it in Exit 7, one of the primary purposes is to take some of that traffic away from Exit 6. Is that not one of the reasons behind looking at a Exit 7, or rebuilt Exit 7, that would alleviate some of that traffic congestion? Certainly, some of that coming from Gothstown and all points.
Yes, yes.
Isn't that along the lines of what you're talking about, as the higher, higher order of priority?
That is correct. And that, and that is the approach that we really need to take a look at, is look at the connectivity benefit as it relates to offsetting an impact someplace else. For instance, the connection to Dunbar Road, Gothstown Road, connection to Exit 7, how much traffic will it diver that normally comes down to Exit, Exit 6, and therefore result in what, what benefit derived there? Do we need less lanes? Do we have less impact, less, less right-of-way acquisition as a result of that, that diversion of traffic flow? Same thing going, going northbound instead of getting off at the ramp coming up, you know, going up to Exit 7. That's the area that we are, we are looking to, to now analyze to a higher degree in our next phase of the project. As, as I indicated, you know, we're looking at that, that transportation model, regional transportation model, which is kind of the umbrella, look down on things. Next one, we wanna get right down to the ground level, look at that, that quarter itself, and, and do a sub-model that give us those, those, that clear evaluation that, yes, providing the environmental impacts across the, the brook system to build that connection has support for that purpose, that it leads that traffic off, therefore creates a safety benefit. And that is our, our next challenge. That's correct.
Keith, can I add one, one point to that? Just to, I don't know if anybody saw this, but two, about two weeks ago, we had, we had people out at Exit 6 and in the morning, and we were actually recording license plates as you come out of Gothstown Road towards Exit 6 in the morning. And we were recording them as you headed down Eddie Road, went into Manchester or Amisca, or headed north or south on, on 293. And the reason for that was to get a handle on, again, how many people might shift over when we, you know, relocate Exit 7. So as, as Keith said, in the next phase, we're gonna be doing more detailed model, but we wanted to, even right now, get a better handle on that. And again, in the June meeting, I'm gonna talk more about, about that. More comments or questions from the folks in the audience?
What do you think the cost of this project is?
Which alternatives? Looking at the single-point diamond interchange alternative, and you put in the new, new alternative that goes over and connects to Gothstown Road, what are we talking about? A hundred and?
You're talking about both? You're talking about just the single point?
Both, both Exit 6 and Exit 7, the total improvement.
Yeah, you're, you're close to a hundred.
About a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty, I believe.
A hundred and twenty million.
The single point alone is like fifteen million.
And that's just construction cost. It doesn't, right-of-way, or paying his salary to help me engineer, which is cheap, of course. Reasonable, let me say, reasonable. Yeah, well, we're basically, overall investment, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, close to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million dollars here, and this is a lot of money. And so it's, it's one of the big questions that we have, how do we, how do we afford it?
So could they, you know, gauging, the turnpike is gonna pay its share, because this is a significant modification to the turnpike. We gotta keep the turnpike whole. That's an important aspect of this. And then hopefully, there'll be some more help from, from the feds. I mean, if, if our contribution increased to 140 or 150, or maybe 60, I mean, hopefully, that's, that's gonna happen. And then, you know, there's, there's gonna have to be some internal help. We, I think the world recognizes that, that, that where do you get the help from? It's, it's an increase in, in revenue. We all know how that comes. So, you know, all those things, all those things have to be, have to be looked at, because it's gotta, it has to be done. It's not a question of, of if, it's a question of when. And this has, I think this has to take place. It just, it has to take place.
Yeah, and, and the department understands that too, because as, as our Bureau of Turnbikes is developing its next capital, capital program, this project is incorporated in it, because we do recognize we have to do something here. It is something that we really need to, to invest in. And, and it will be coming forward in the next capital program.
Keith, what can the town of Gothstown do to champion its preference for an extension of Exit 7 to the back road?
Continue to support the project, continue to be involved in the decision process through the, through the, through the public input process, work through the Regional Planning Commission, making sure that that it remains as a priority, as part of, part of the overall transportation program they have. You know, certainly, there are other program funds that might be able to be looked at through here. So, so basically, get that support, make sure the support's in there so that the, the GAC committee, the Executive Council, and the Governor understands that it's a priority for the region, and that it needs to be put into the 10-year plan.
I think meeting with Chris Pappas, who's now our Executive Counsel, and who, who play a vital role in, in the, in the layout of this, because that's how the council works, be very important to make sure that he gets input from the town, as, as well as from the Planning Commission and, and others. We wanna keep this thing up where it should be.
And as we carry forward into the next phase of this project, you know, to continue to have the volunteer membership in the, in the groups that we come forward to, continue to voice the town's, town's position.
Yes, Marty.
I've sat in on several of the meetings. I notice I hear Hooksit more and more and more. Are you allowed to share with us some of the comments, some of the feelings on Hooksit? What are they, what are they looking to gain? Are we in a, a battle between Gothstown and Hooksit for any, anything that, that may come forth?
It's an interesting question. We, we certainly opened up our.
Pandora's box?
No, no, no. And we basically opened up the, the opportunity for the town of Hooksit to be involved in this early quarter analysis phase. And as you noted from Marty's slide, we had, what, how many, 17 or quite a few, quite a few meetings already. Hooksit was involved in probably the first three. We have not seen them come to the meetings anymore. So what am I supposed to take from that? That they really don't see any, any direct component that's gonna involve their time? I don't know. I can't speak for them, okay? All I can tell you is, is that, that the number of, number of representations at, at the, at the committee meetings, it's been waning off, so. And I really don't see, I mean, if you look at it from a Hooksit standpoint, there, the most of the benefits is really derived just south of Hooksit.
Right, but on the opposite side of the river.
That's correct, that's correct. And so I, I really don't see, see the town jumping in, and they haven't been jumping in and saying that there's this particular element, we want, we want you to move that Exit 7 further to the north or something. I haven't seen that.
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't there some talk of Hacket Hill being involved as well, some, some changes there?
The, not necessarily the, the, the Hacket Hill Road intersection, but there is, City, City of Manchester has a planned development on Hacket Hill, Hacket Hill. This Exit 7 new location certainly provides the, the back door access to that, to that development potential versus being off Hacket Hill. I think the city, I know the city has expressed that, you know, the current main access for their, for that development is really, impedes their ability to develop that site, because it's a difficult site to get to without having that direct access. Whereas Exit 7, they see Exit 7 having that more direct access capabilities, and therefore maybe a, a, not maybe, will probably be a, a benefit to, to their development proposals, long-term development proposals for Hacket Hill. So they're, they're very much interested too, relative to the economic component as, you know, as well. So, but, but yeah, I mean, it, there is a, there is a direct benefit for that. Thank you. Welcome.
Others in the audience wanna comment at this time? Now's your opportunity.
June 11th is our public information meeting at the, at the college. Please feel free to come and, and listen to the presentation, we're again seeking input.
Is there a time on that meeting?
Seven o'clock.
In which college?
Manchester. We'll be in there.
People getting off the ramp.
Turning on Front Street.
I drive southbound every night, get off on Front Road, signal early, let them know you're coming. Any other comments from the audience, last opportunity, any other comments from the board? Senator DeSandro, wish to make a closing comment?
First of all, thanks, thanks.
Carl?
I just, you know, I, I attended almost every one of the meetings. I, I just wanna applaud DOT and PHB's efforts to explain, to console, to put up with all the baloney that we threw at them, and it was appreciated. I know they listened, and on behalf of the town, I think it should be acknowledged.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the presentation, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to coming back.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna take a quick recess, let folks. Should move on.
Yeah.
Who's the next?
Yes, identify him.
Appreciate it.
How big is that piece of land?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it? How big is it?
I appreciate it.
How big is that piece of land?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
How big is it?
I'm sure I'll be seeing so much of it.
Was there any new business? Let me ask if any new business come before the board, before we jump into the Selectman's Goals under Old Business? That may be a little bit of a discussion. No? No business? Okay. So, let's talk about the 2013 goals from the Board of Selectmen. We certainly heard a lot at the all-boards meeting. Personally, the takeaway for me from that meeting was that folks wanted to see the board take a leadership role and develop a plan to move Goffstown forward economically, from an economic development perspective, whatever that may look like. I mean, I heard that pretty loud and clear, especially in the closing of the meeting. There seemed to be a lot of discussion about that. So, that's something I'd like to see us focus on, for one thing, is trying, whatever that might look like, I mean, it may not be attainable for whatever reason, whether you don't have the infrastructure, you don't have the services, the utilities to bring to the sites, but setting forward is our vision for trying to move us forward economically to balance out the tax base and take away some of that burden on the residential taxpayers. So, I'll throw that out there as a goal and ask for other suggestions from other board members for goals. I mean, we'll obviously have to refine some of these things, but I'm just trying to frame up what we see as the big issues and challenges before us over the next 12 months or so.
I would like to see us when the CIP items come out, Mr. Chair, that we review them and really look at the needs of the CIP goals and to try to stop delaying things and try to bring things that may need to come forward, forward, so we don't end up with the big snowball effect as we're fast approaching now. I mean, it's just, we've put things off for so long, as we all know, we're at the point now that I think we need to possibly take another look at that, reprioritize as we do every year, to sit down and take another hardy look at those things and try to work so that we can move the town forward.
And what do you think the board's role should be in that? I mean, obviously, you've got the CIP and you've got Budget Committee working on actual grinding of the numbers.
Work hand-in-hand with them, Mr. Chair. I mean, try to give them some guidance, try to just, you know, I know it's been this board, that board, that board, if we maybe work together jointly to, you know, to try to make it work a little better, smoother. Last year's, as you and I said on the board last year, I mean, I think things went pretty smooth last year, but, I mean, just let's try to make it even better than what it was last year.
Yes.
I think one of the things I took away from that meeting the other evening was the comment from Test Mart's, "Why do we do this?" We have the minutes from that meeting, and I think we need to do more than just make those minutes available to them. I think this board should go through those minutes again, review all of the topics, the goals, the ideas that all the committees and representatives had, and from those incorporate them into our goals and set out a vision for the remainder of the year. And some of the things that I heard, I heard almost all of the various departments and committees saying, "Well, we'd really like to do this, and we want to put in expansion here, and we want to hire a person here, and we want to do..." And going back to the comment that Selectman LaMaitre just made about CIP, I don't think any board in the past has ever deferred things simply because we wanted to defer things. There was an economic and a fiscal reality.
Correct.
We can't afford it. And I think this board needs to take that lead role and say, "These are the realities. This is the economic time. This is our vision to move the town economically forward, but until that happens, these are the realities." And this is kind of the attitude that we have to develop, that, you know, we need to move forward, we need to address capital needs, but we have to do it in a fashion that is coordinated, not haphazard, and not everyone is going to be able to get everything that they want, that wish list.
Correct, and that's why part of my statement was that we all work together as a team, as a group, to come up what is best collaboratively put together so that we can focus on what things are things that need to be done and get the best things that can be done at this time.
And one tool we haven't used very much on the town side has been bonding. And, you know, it's a philosophical difference. This town has always been pay-as-you-go. So, the taxpayers today pay for something that may last us 10, 15, 20 years. The taxpayers today are paying for it. They may not be here in 10 or 15 years during the whole useful life of whatever we're buying. In some towns, you just yavvus, they said, "You know, we're going to bond, and the people that benefit from this over the next 20 years will pay for it in their taxes." But philosophically, we haven't gotten there on the town side to do that.
Historically, we've had a very difficult time passing bonds, some bonds, some after many years.
The last one that we did was the recycling trucks, remember, and the recycling bins? And that passed the first time.
Yeah, well, we've had some that didn't go through.
None of that one. That one went through because we saw the benefit. The landfill one went through first time. Those are the only bonds we have right now on the town side. Sewer has theirs.
Lynchville-Danis Park, it took us...
Betterment assessment, yeah.
Understood, and even that.
Right.
The town wasn't even paying it, but it still took two years.
Two or three years for that, two years.
Passed that.
Right.
Oh, it didn't come to fruition until we had that funding with our. When we got 50% funding, that's why it passed, because the residents didn't want to pay 100% of it.
I think the whole problem we get right now is the taxes are so high that people are just, getting by is very difficult at best, and to try and ask them to give more is, where do you get it and how do you get it from them, you know? I think we'd be better suited to try and figure out how to save money in town and stop spending as much as we spend on things that we don't need to spend things on. I mean, there's a lot of places we could certainly cut back, and you could take that money and spend it elsewhere. If you want to buy something else, that's fine, but, you know, rather than raise the taxes or try to go after something you don't need, I just, I don't see the future in spending what you, you know, I understand if you need something, that's one thing, but just to want something, to have it, that mentality has to kind of stop. We have to just stop it, you know? If you want it and you need it to have it for something that's really important, okay. If the people were going to give you that, but just to have something you want, I want a million dollars, but nobody's going to give it to me.
You didn't want to send it?
No, I didn't, damn it. I wouldn't be here.
I thought you were down on Zephyr Hills.
I know which hill it was.
So, how would you phrase that or craft it as a goal? What would the goal be to...
Well, I think all departments in this town probably could all save something somewhere if they wanted to. I don't think there's a department in this town that can save something. Somewhere along the line, could cut somewhere, you know, if we have to figure a route to get there.
So, would a goal be something similar to ask each department to come in with a budget that's a 10% reduction or a 5%, throw out a number? I mean, that's a little dangerous.
Well, and I agree with...
Yes and no.
Selectman Brown's saying, but that's a technical fix.
Right.
That's, it's a...
Well, it's a start.
But it's a cultural change that has to occur. Technical fixes don't change cultural attitudes.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, totally different. I mean, that's very specific, very focused, but talking about changing the mindset of folks.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's right.
But a 10% cut doesn't, that's just a technical fix to that. That doesn't change the mindset of the departments.
Yeah, I understand, but it could be a standalone goal. I mean, it's clear, it's concise.
And previous boards have defined it in terms of the tax rate, maintaining a tax rate. That doesn't necessarily mean a cut. That means find some revenues to keep the same tax rate. I mean, there's two sides to the ledger in budget. There's expenses and there's revenue. But, and that's why the board used to take that into consideration and say, "Let's have a level tax rate," and that was a goal several years.
Well, I think it's gotten out of control, and we have to find a way to get it back into control. And I know, you know, you've got a lot of bedrooms paying for taxes here, and you've got no actual revenue for any manufacturing or anything else coming to town. It's very weak. And I know we're trying to get there. I hear that, but I think we're beaten up. We need to get into maybe looking at 114 corridor more if we want to put some... That's a corridor we can use, and we've got gas coming this way if we just want to extend it. Maybe we should try and pursue that more so in the back road, which you know, Manchester's probably never going to give you a right way to come down that road with trucks between, you know, evening and morning. It's not going to do it. They have no reason to, really.
Well, we could try.
Yeah.
That definition of trucks, you know?
All right, I know. Got a stat somewhere, I guess, you know, the bleeding has to stop sooner or later.
So, I hear economic development is something that...
Yeah, absolutely.
The chairman is saying it's his.
And we keep coming back to that. I mean, here you, and then we hear people talking about it, who just spoke here tonight. I mean, it comes back to that thread of economic development, and what can we do to improve our economic lot and life and reduce the burden on the residential taxpayer?
I can s...
Is that a fire alarm?
No, I don't think so.
Was it?
No, you know.
Oh.
Several years ago, we tried a TIF district, and that didn't pass. I mean, we did get the approval, we did get the authorization to develop TIF districts, but that particular project, because there were a couple of articles that during, in that March meeting that did pass. But I think the basic overall plan there was kind of flawed because it depended on development only as a parcel was sold. It was kind of like a patchwork kind of thing, and it could have taken 20 years, 30 years, nobody knows, but maybe we could meld a bonding issue to put in infrastructure into an area, creating a TIF district to pay back that bond or just keep in that area to develop a 114 section or maybe even the section we were looking at, but...
Build it, and they will come?
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
But again, in my mind, as part of a bigger economic development scheme, you know, with the understanding, we're not going to get there this year. We're not going to get there, it's going to take many, many years, but as long as you've got the plan to build upon, so that as you develop these areas and you improve the economic tax base, it makes sense. It fits, the pieces fit. So, we're not saying, "Yeah, let's develop 114 corridor," and we say, "Jeez, I wish we'd have thought of this before we'd have done that," because, you know, and that's what a plan will get for you. You know, how much detail goes into it? Maybe not a whole lot of it, but at least it'll, it should chart a basic course for how we approach this, set up identifying where is it reasonable to focus economic development, because clearly there's some areas that can, and then there's clearly a lot of areas that can't. We've got steep topography and a lot of legend, a lot of wetlands. So, I mean, it's fairly easy to start looking at specific areas and targeting those, and then once we do that, and we've got our baseline, and we can say, "Well, okay, which one makes more sense to pursue first?"
And working with the county, too, because I think...
Exactly.
I don't think they want to sell their land. They want to lease their land. Well, our interest is leasing to something that's a taxable corporation, rather than other government entities that pay their taxes.
That was an interesting point that was brought up. The county wasn't sitting here that night, and they really should have been.
Right, yeah.
In setting... Because someone mentioned they're putting a gas line in, and no one ever told us.
Yeah. Do we have land we own down off of Grassmere, in Grassmere? Town owns land in Grassmere besides the...
Besides the police station?
No, besides the, I'm talking, on the other side of the river.
On the other side of the river?
Towards the DPW.
Yep.
Yeah, we only own Barnard property, Perry property.
The Barnard property.
I mean, that's a piece of property you can always work, you know, that could incorporate from 114 also, you know?
Well, first of all, you've got to deal with the zoning.
Well, I think if people understand that you're going to...
We can deal with zoning.
I think our plan for that property is quite correct, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, before we change course there, we better make sure...
I mean, how big a piece of property we talked about there? Is it 20 something?
Yeah, I don't know, not big enough to really...
Well, no, it's really not, barely big enough for our recreational plans.
Right.
There's not a whole lot of meat left on that bone once the grand plan for the recreational complex comes to be.
Just shifting gears, one of the things that was in my list of things here, communicate with the schools and see what the schools want to do this year. Do we want to have a plan? Do we want to try to... They admitted, they admitted that at their communications, "We did a very good job selling our budget this year to the townspeople, and the school feels that they failed. They let the town down miserably because they had the Dunbarton issue going on, the schools, you know..."
Change of leadership.
"Change of leadership and all that." They had, you know, a lot of questions with that, but I mean, do we want to try to sit down with the schools early? Do we want to try to sit down so that this year, if Chief O'Brien comes forward with his plan for the fire department, and are we going to be faced with head bumping and banging with the school and the town fire department? Are we going to have to make a choice this year? Which one are we going to pick? Which one are we not going to pick if we start our homework early with that?
Yeah, we tried that last year, Joe.
I know, I know, but I mean...
But maybe we're reaching a point where the people in the school administration are getting the message that, you know, maybe it is time to start sitting down earlier and having a more open...
They're going to have a presentation, well, they must have submitted to CIP already, if you want me to, and get you a copy of whatever they submitted to CIP, so you know what their plans are.
And one of the other things that I've heard, and I'll say it here several times, that, "Let's sell Maple Ave School. Let's sell Le Bartlett School. Let's build one school, Mountview Middle School. Let's make a big, big community campus school. One school, bring everybody to one school, instead of rehabbing a little Band-Aid on the Fernando School, a little Band-Aid on the Maple Ave School. Sell those properties. Get those properties back on the tax deed. Get them properties up and going again, and let's build one community school, one school. Everybody goes, "Maple Ave is a pretty new school. If we add to either sides of that to make it a big community school for the town of Gofftown, would that be better for us?" You know, I mean, I've heard that, I've heard that mentioned, you know, in, you know, in Fernando. I've heard that mentioned at the Planet Palooza. I've heard it mentioned several times, just, you know, out and about. Is that something we should consider? Is that something we should try? And the town administrator said, "Bonding things, let's try to bond that. Let's try to get A1, one big school, so everybody goes to the one spot, big, bad, or indifferent." I heard that. I don't know how many, I don't know how many else, how many other people heard it. I've heard it. I know it's out there, and they're talking about it.
Yeah, I've heard it, too, but, you know, it's going to come to a decision as to what... Assume we want to bond something.
Correct.
What is, what is it that we will bond that would provide the biggest benefit to the town of Gofftown?
A new school for... We'd be good, we'd be good for 20, 30 years, Mr. Chair, instead of 10 or 15 down the road, and, you know, we'd have new buildings. We wouldn't have the old buildings to deal with.
And I hear, and I hear that, Mark, but I think you'd get a different argument from the economic development council.
Oh, probably.
Because they would say the most important thing to bond is infrastructure, so we can bring in the commercial and industrial development and offset the tax base.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue with that one bit. I mean, infrastructure right now is probably the most important thing that we have to deal with, but there are other things that we need to look to get the entire picture, I think. I mean, do we let the fire department suffer for another year, or do we let the schools suffer for another year, or do we, like, this year, we lost, we kind of lost everything, you know? I mean, sooner or later, the fire station is going to fall down. Sooner or later, the schools are going to fall down. I mean, we've come full circle, I think.
Yeah, I guess when I look at, again, the bigger picture, if we can bring in commercial development and we can drive down the tax burden on the homeowners.
Yes.
The homeowners would be more likely to say, "Okay, that worked pretty good. Let's bond the schools or the fire stations."
I agree with you.
You've got to walk away from, get to a position where you can take a stand before you're going to...
Well, has anyone kind of reverse engineered it? How much commercial industrial development would we need to shift the tax burden, and is that amount of development even possible in the land that we have available?
I would say no, because as, well, Mr. Chair, as you said before, I mean, we have...
Call me Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. But just, I mean, look at the topographical scale of the lands that we have here. I mean, hills, mountains, gullies.
Didn't the Planning Commission do a build-out scenario?
Yeah, Southern Hampshire Planning, build-out.
Let's, maybe we should resurrect that and take a look at it.
I mean, if the reality works out that there, based on what we have available, you're never going to get that shift.
Well...
Then there's another reality we have to face.
But you can, you can offset it by starting and then bringing it in slowly. As Alan said, you've got to kind of crawl before you walk, and I mean, we can, we can keep that.
Yeah, and if we don't look at those areas that are suitable for commercial industrial development and bring the utilities to it, they will eventually get gobbled up by residential.
Well, certainly.
I mean, it will happen.
Well, you have four residential properties now on Mass Road that are all up for sale as a commercial piece of property.
Yeah.
So, it goes in the opposite direction.
And you have commercial pieces of property that have, that have had tenants, that don't have commercial tenants, that now have multifamilies, right on Mass Road.
Yep.
And we've had a planning board that's increased residential requests that come to serve, unfortunately.
At some point in time, somebody's got to say no. I mean...
If they meet all the...
You can't say no, yeah.
Right.
The zoning regs, you can't say no.
Well, I mean, it brings in so many different groups and so many different aspects. It brings in planning. It brings in zoning. It brings in engineering. It brings in, you know, Budget Committee and everything. I mean, it brings in everybody. So, what is our role as the leaders, so-called leaders of the community? What's our role going to be? And I think our role needs to be, what's the first step, and what's the second step? And I think our role is to bring people together, the different committees and boards and groups and the general public, to create a vision, and vision, I'm going to keep saying, an economic vision for Goffstown, because, I mean, that's all we hear. Property taxes are too high, property taxes are too high. As long as property taxes continue to be too high, forget about bonding schools, forget about bonding fire stations, forget about building new roads, get my tax rate down, then I'll consider, you know, bonding some stuff to better my community. But, and the only way to get those down is to bring in some commercial development.
I think then you've got to curb some of your spending. You really have to, you have to slow down the growth of your spending in your departments and whatnot. You just can't keep spending what you don't have or can't get. I mean, if the taxpayer won't give any more up, and I don't blame them, I'm a taxpayer, you are, we all are, you know, it's tough. I hear people telling me, "Look, when I retire, moving out of town, selling the house," because they can't afford to stay here. It's, you know, that's a hard reality, but it's happening all the time. I hear people saying it, and it's...
Well, I don't want to spend too much more time on goals tonight, because we've still got another big issue to tackle, or at least to jump into, and then we've got some non-public we have to get to as well.
We have talked in the past about developing a comprehensive economic development plan for the town, and we have never embarked there or asked EDC to look into that.
Well, I think we should, and I think one of the tools we should bring to that for the initial discussion is the build-out plan. I think we need to see, you know, what Southern, what the Regional Planning Commission saw as the ultimate future of Goffstown when it's all built out.
Yeah, there may not be, there may not be enough to offset it. It's all said and done.
So, can we, can we do that, Sue? Can we get that and distribute it to the members of the board?
Your build-out plan from Southern Hampshire Planning, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that'd be a good first step. Does that seem reasonable, and take some time to look at that and digest it?
I think we want to see what comes out of the Planet Palooza, too.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, and we're also scheduled for a master plan update soon.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
So, going back to what we talked about earlier, those are all concrete steps, but I still think we need to have some type of document that comes out of the meeting we had last week that basically lays out what everyone's goals were, what we heard, and then what this board has decided on, and those are some of the steps that we lay out that we're looking to take to meet those goals. But taking individual steps, things like that, we're still not, we still don't have a plan.
Yeah, I have to admit, I didn't have time to look at the minutes from the all-boards meeting. Has it been boiled down enough to identify specific goals that they all had, and can it be further refined so that it's more specific? Library wants this.
Well, why don't we do, why don't we take these minutes, go back, and come to the next meeting with what our distilled thoughts were, put that all together and agree on what we as a board heard.
Okay, yeah, because we may be hearing different things.
Right.
That might be, yeah, that might be a good filter.
I heard a suggestion. Somebody said we should do this more often. We should have an all-boards meeting twice a year, because they liked getting together and talking, if there's a purpose, and if it's guiding the town's direction, there is a purpose.
Okay, so for that next meeting, which is two weeks from now.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we make sure everybody's got the build-out plan, Sue, please, and then our homework assignment will be for each of us to think about and review those minutes and sugar it down, to take away the, you know, the concrete salient points that were brought up by each of them, and stack them up, see how they compare.
Minutes for that are online, Sue?
They're in...
Yeah, they're in your packet, too.
They're in your packet.
All right, yeah, true, yeah.
I think that'd be a good start, I think. Perhaps we should move on.
If you want to look at the DVD, that should be on demand, too.
All right, Seth. That a good start for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that leaves us with, so we've got some non-public to do, and then we've got the workshop. Can these, I think we talked about this, can't these workshops be scheduled as non-meetings?
No.
No, they can't?
No.
Can't at all?
No, non-meetings, a meeting with an attorney, negotiations.
That's it, I think.
Yeah. Social Chancin' Counts.
Mr. Chair, just before, before we just leave under Old Business, just, and I know Carl's not here, and I just don't want it to, again, fall off. Couple of weeks ago, we had talked, more than a couple of weeks ago, about project updates.
Mm-hmm.
And I know roads have been completed. If we can just see if we can get kind of a road plan, project update. Also, Spring Street, how they've made out with the...
The wire's been lifted. We just need to go back and try it.
Okay.
I got an, I got an email, got an email. I thought it was sent to the entire board, but the wire was lifted, and we need to just go back and try it.
Rejust.
Did you get that email, Sue?
I did not.
Okay, I'll forward it to you. Sorry.
That's all right.
And then on the CMAC meetings, the Steering Committee, are those, are those public meetings?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And those dates will be published as far as when the committee itself, the Steering Committees are meeting?
Right. The kickoff's tomorrow night with the public information meeting.
Right.
But I don't have any other meeting dates.
No.
And then could we get dates on highway traffic safety? I know they meet quarterly, but can we get the dates that they're going to meet quarterly? Because I'm the rep to that, and this is our plan. And that's all I have for Old.
Okay, is there anything else before we move into the workshop on compensation? Chief's sitting there, but I think you're sitting, you're here for the non-public?
I'm here to support you.
Thank you, Chief. I knew we could count on you. All right. So, one thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to take an overall look at compensation and review employee wages and benefits from a big-picture perspective.
Now, this is a printout of what's on your Selectman's Drive on your computer, and we've provided it up. You have the admin department, you have the police department, and then you, police, fire, and public works, and the next three departments have broken out into union and non-union. So, did you get your book?
Is it in there?
It's on the table.
Oh, okay.
Hold on a second, sure.
All right, thank you.
Glad to go.
Thank you.
The fifth department was Parks and Rec, and the sixth department's library, but we don't control the library wages or job descriptions.
If you missed it, it wasn't in there until late Saturday.
Oh, okay. That's why I didn't see it the other day.
And section seven is the local government center's 2012 annual compensation study. And we just took out the excerpts of the grouping that Goffstown was in. So you don't have the whole thing.
So let's sort background.
Right. We're in the population category from, what is it, fifteen to twenty thousand?
Fifteen and...
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yes.
Twenty-five, okay. So you'll see that. And then the eighth tab is the civil service requirements in the city of Manchester, how they set up in labor grades and steps. So you have that as a comparison. Now, I don't know if anyone else has had difficulty accessing the drive-in there. Has everyone been able to...
What do you mean by that? I'm not sure what you mean.
On the Selectman's computer in there, there's a folder called Selectman, and there's a folder called HR Data. And I've been putting all of this in there as we go along.
Oh, it's only accessible through this computer?
Yes. Or if you have remote access to it, if you set that up with IT. Okay.
Never used it.
You've never used it, okay. But that's why we printed this out, so we don't have the same printouts.
Look, is that the Jaeger Decker site that's moving in there?
You don't want that. Mr. Chair? So we've got, I'm sorry. So for Manchester, we've got the list of pay grades, job classes, the class title, pay grades, and then we've got the sheet that breaks out the salary associated with each of the pay grades.
Exactly.
For reference.
That's just to show you how we do it, yeah. I think the state has a similar system.
And I can tell you, it's very, very similar to the state.
State, yeah.
It's very similar. Yes.
Just a comment on the organizational charts. On the police department organizational chart, they don't show the numbers of people. Can we get that? Same with fire department. In other words, it says patrol sergeants. And under that, patrol officers. Well, how many are there?
Okay.
And I think on the library, there isn't an organizational chart.
No, I, you know, to be fair, I really didn't ask for much of the library, since the library trustees oversee that.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we oversee the budget in terms of how much are we going to allow in the budget, but other than that, they control their staff and they...
So they wouldn't be on our pay matrix?
Yeah. No, they have their own pay matrix.
They have their own, okay.
Yeah.
And the LGC, again, is by way of background.
It serves as a comparison, but I would caution you, because a position with the same title may have different responsibilities in every town.
Exactly, yeah. And I'll give you a couple of examples, like Alton, okay? Parks and Rec is responsible for the town clock in the town hall. Okay? So just be aware.
Only Phil would know that.
Yeah, but it's close to him. Well, the director of Parks and Rec is who I have to deal with. With the town, it's in her budget for the maintenance of the town clock, which is in the town hall. Just so that you're aware of. So if you're trying to compare Parks and Rec with Alton versus Goffstown, two different animals.
Town clock.
But there's other things...
Well, yeah, that's an example of ways, of things are not consistent from one town to the next, yeah.
And some of them, you look at and you say, why is that the way it is? Well, we used to do it differently, and we do it this way now. That's the answer.
Yeah.
It's the way we've always done it.
And the thing that this doesn't look at either, it doesn't look at, you know, you asked about staffing numbers in police and fire. We haven't done any cross-examinations with other towns our size in terms of number of staffs, people in each department either. We did do town hall a while ago, and town hall number of staff is really small compared to other towns in our population categories. Whereas towns our size usually have two assessors, they have more than one planning person, and those land use offices are much larger than our staff is. Remember, we cut down our land use office when the economy turned, it was getting really slow. So we're down a position in land use right now.
All right, so how do we want to proceed?
Well, I would say that if you haven't looked at this information, it was online, and it sounds like no one accesses it through the computer. You may want to go through this and see what additional information you need in order to do an analysis.
Hey, we've heard one suggestion from Nick a good one time.
Yeah, Nick would like to know the number of people in each position.
Yeah, are they full-time or part-time? Are they...
Multi-year. Yeah.
If I could ask, when you say do an analysis, we could look at every single position, and we could determine what we think are the ideal salary ranges, let's say, for every single position. But unless there was some seismic shift, there is no way we're going to take everybody that we have now employed and move them onto those scales.
Right.
I mean, the only opportunity...
Through attrition.
Through attrition. So one of the earliest things that we can do without having to analyze is to develop the pay matrix. These are the steps, these are the, or I should say, these are the pay grades, these are the steps. And then we can take individuals, the incumbent individuals, and put them on those matrices where they are. An incumbent person, not an incumbent, but when a new person gets hired, that's the opportunity to look at that position, analyze it. So that can occur over a period of time, because we don't have a lot of turnover in town.
Right. But we've done that.
Yeah, that's basically what we do.
Every time someone leaves, retires, or goes, moves on, or during a reorganization, we look at the position.
That's the opportunity to do it.
We rewrite the job description.
State does the same thing.
Yeah.
When positions are vacant, that's the opportunity to look at the job description.
Yep. And there's level of responsibility, labor grade. Right, because when Marilyn left, Marilyn left a whole different labor grade or matrix than what we always replace with.
Yeah.
And once that matrix is developed, then the objective is getting people onto that matrix. So for your bargaining units, that's where you have to negotiate. And there's a give and take. In order for somebody to go onto that matrix, the town has to give something or whatever.
And you're right, our matrices are such that some of them are like a penny an hour difference or two cents an hour difference. It's ridiculous to have matrices so close. And we have, through attrition, been saying, okay, go to a matrix that exists. Don't create a new one. We have too many now.
So unless it exists now, I would say one of the first goals should be to develop one town-wide pay matrix.
Okay, and you mentioned labor grade and steps. Is the board agreeable to going in that direction and developing a matrix that has labor grades and steps?
Yes, I am. I think it's proven, at the state level anyway, so that it works.
Mm-hmm. Now, the next discussion is the percentage difference between the labor grades and the steps.
Well, your labor, the percentage difference between your labor grades are not necessarily the same as your, because people aren't typically moving up labor grades unless they're getting promoted or you're hiring into that.
Right.
The important one is, what is that, what is that annual step?
Right. And how many steps do you want?
And how many steps do you want?
To cover a career? And what's the length of a career?
And what...
Or is it for half of a career? You know, you have...
How long does it take someone to fully develop into a position?
Right.
Does it take 20 years for you to learn your job, or does it take 10 years?
And how do you move from one step to the next? What's the criteria?
Exactly.
You know, and...
We have nine steps now.
Teamsters Union, we started out with the performance-based.
HRI, yep. Pardon me?
And we started with the Teamsters Union by moving to the performance-based. So that gives us how you're going to move through those steps.
Well, there's no steps in the...
Well, no, if we develop steps.
Right. Theirs is, we went with the low and the high. So there's a range, and where they are in that range is dependent upon their performance.
Understood. I'm dumb up. We're going to a matrix that we're going to try and use consistently throughout town.
Currently, most of our current pay matrices, you've noticed, are four percent steps. With the exception of step E, for some reason, I think a study had been done before I got here, that people were leaving.
Right, I think it was the third year.
It was E is the big one. That went to six percent.
Right.
And that's for non-union. So it's all four percent with one six percent. But people have been frozen. There haven't been any steps for three or four years now.
That's going to be the sticking point, is what's the percentage of steps?
How many steps and what percentage between steps? I understand, and I wasn't here, Phil, you were probably given, prior to this nine-step matrix of four percent, there had been like a 20-year matrix?
There was a bigger one, and we condensed it down.
Were the percentages between steps smaller, I would think, than four percent?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
But in this day and age, four percent between steps is unheard of.
Right.
It's big money, really.
Well, I didn't have a chance to look at Manchester's. What's Manchester's steps?
That is unattainable. It's driving us out of business.
It is. What is it?
It's three and a half percent between steps. It's three and a half, there's three and a half percent between...
Grades.
Achievement steps. There's a three and a half percent longevity step. There's three and a half, I mean, it's, I mean, you can get an 18% raise if you hit it right on your longevity, your anniversary.
That's unheard of.
Oh, wow.
I mean, it doesn't happen maybe once in somebody's career, but...
Right.
So we're not that bad?
We're doing good.
No.
But we're us.
I know.
You compare yourselves to a degree, but...
How does the state work?
Well, the other thing is, is how often are you eligible for a step? In the state, the first five years, every year. Then it's two years for the next step, two years for the next one, three years for the next one. So it's protracted out so that it comes close to representing a career.
Oh, okay. So the first five years, it's annual?
Yeah.
The first five years, the annual, you said? And then it's every other year?
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's two years for the next one. I have to check the numbers. But in other words, it increases the number of years in a step so that it sort of protracts it out over a career. So you don't hit the ceiling too early, and it's, it still happens.
So if you didn't change your position, you would max out after 20 years, 25 years?
I'd have to look up.
Oh, okay.
I'll look it up for you, Chuck.
Do you know what the percentage is between the steps?
I can find it for you.
Oh, that'd be great. Or I can call my personnel office up there and get it.
Where's the ceiling going to end, you know? Where do you start?
Right, well, that's what I think. I think we have to stop looking at it as, when does a person max out, thinking that, you know, it's, the individual can't earn anymore. It's, what is the value of a position? And when the person reaches that, if, and I'll say, I used a widget maker. If a widget maker makes X, if that's their value, is X dollars, whether that person's there for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, other than the cost of living increases...
If they want to make more, they would look to...
Get promoted, change jobs.
Yeah, right, right, right.
But there has to be an upper limit.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mean to imply that.
Oh, no, I don't think you did, right.
Are cost of living indexes used in either one of your payroll systems? And it's applied to the matrix, then?
Yes.
So annually, your matrix goes up by whatever the cost of living is, plus someone gives a three and a half.
When it's given, it's not a...
What do you mean, when it's given?
It's not an automatic...
It's negotiated as part of the contract. Is it annually, though?
No, it may not be every year.
So you can go five years without a cost of living change?
Yep, you could.
Private sector does. You know, I mean, it's just...
But once you have that whole town-wide matrix, if the cost of living was increased, if you wanted to give a cost of living increase, you just change the matrix. You increase it by that percentage.
Right.
Across the board. Everybody changes and...
That's what we do now.
And that reflects the economy and...
So, for tonight, I think we've agreed that we need to take some time looking at this. We're going to get some numbers. I'm sorry, I'm working on four hours. It's a long flight back from...
Wherever you work.
Yeah.
Zephyr Hills.
You were in Zephyr Hills, weren't you?
Yeah. Got a problem with a tire on the aircraft. It'll take us 20 minutes to change it. I'm like, come on, you can change a tire on this aircraft in 20 minutes? Hour and a half later. But anyway, it's like the rest. So, yeah, it starts tonight and moving us to the next step that we identified. The first thing was to make sure everybody picked this up, was able to research. It sounds like not all of us had that opportunity, so... And, yeah, we've asked, you know, to have some numbers attached to here. How many positions are in here?
Yep.
How many are full-time? How many are part-time? How many are occupied? How many are vacant?
Do we have the percentage of our town budget? What is salaries?
I can get that for you. Just the wages, like anything with longevity or...